This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Welcome to the city council meeting for Wednesday, December 3rd. The meeting tonight is being recorded and broadcast by eMedia on Charter Channel 193 and live streaming on their webpage, easthamptonmedia.org. Councillors and participants in this meeting are gathering hybrid on an order extended through June 30, 2027, allowing us to do so. I remind both the members of the city council and the public participating remotely to remain muted until recognized by the city council president. Also, for the members of the public, please remove your camera for the duration of the meeting unless you are participating in either public speak time or the public hearing. Thank you. This meeting is now called for order. Mary Ann.
Jonathan Schmidt.
Here.
Connie Denham.
Here.
Amanda Newton.
Here.
Felicia Jassik.
Here.
JP Kuzinski. Tom Peak.
Here.
Brad Riley.
Here.
Tamara Smith.
Here.
JT Terrell.
At this time, we'd like to take a moment of silence. Thank you. Would all please rise for our national pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I will work toward it. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I call you to the podium, please. We have the opportunity to discuss the issue of community kindness and gratitude and recognizing some students, Brennan Taylor, Aiden Esposito, and Stillman Havener. If I pronounced that correctly, if I haven't, please let me know. Havenor, Steven, Stillman Havener. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you for making time for this out of order. I appreciate that. I think the students will probably appreciate that, not having to wait for a public hearing to have this.
You're welcome to stay as long as you like.
It's probably gonna be over an hour, so you don't want to do that. So I was emailed last month about a pretty amazing act of kindness that originated at Mountain View School. I was told that there was three students that were really concerned about people that were gonna lose their SNAP benefits and organized a food drive. And so I thought that was great, and I thought it would be really important for us to kind of shine a light on that and recognize three young people trying to do something really great for their community. So at this time, I would ask if Brennan Taylor, Aiden Esposito, and Stillman Havner, Havner, come on up. You guys just stand here, I'm gonna read this, and then I'm gonna give it to you, okay? All right, so this is for community kindness and gratitude. The community kindness and gratitude recognition is a tribute to individuals who embody the spirit of kindness, empathy, and gratitude within our community. This recognition celebrates those who, without being asked, dedicate their time and hearts to making East Hampton a better place for all. This award is presented to Brennan Taylor, Aiden Esposito, and Stillman Havener. Three remarkable young leaders who demonstrated compassion and initiative by organizing a food drive at Mountain View School after learning that some residents would not receive SNAP benefits in November. Through thoughtful action, they mobilized their peers, engaged their school community, and showed a deep understanding of the importance of caring for others. Their act of kindness serves as a shining example of what it means to lead with empathy and gratitude. Brennan, Aiden, and Stillman remind us that small acts of generosity can have a profound impact, and that leadership begins with the courage to see a need and take action. We honor Brennan, Aiden, and Stillman for their compassion, initiative, and commitment to helping others. Their actions reflect the heart of East Hampton's community spirit and inspire us all to continue creating a culture of giving, appreciation, and hope. And that is presented today on December 3rd to these three remarkable young people. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and on behalf of everyone sitting here, everyone, every city councillor, we appreciate your efforts. We recognize what you've done. It's sad in this time that we have to, we find ourselves in such a position that such need is there and such a requirement to step up at all levels. You exemplify that. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What, you don't wanna stay?
We're just encouraging them to begin their introduction to this business. Oh, gosh. No minutes to approve this evening. We have, however, an opportunity for public comment. That would be anything that is not on our agenda, anything that is not being covered tonight, for example, anything on the public hearing list. For those who have comments about the public hearing, we'd take those comments later during the public hearing time. But for anything else, we would offer this time up to three minutes to say whatever's on your mind. We would ask you to identify yourself when you step to the podium. We would ask you to give your address, and we would ask you to recognize that we will notify you when you have 30 seconds left. We have a new system. Yay! Hold it up there.
Not very high-tech, but...
Not very high-tech, but it's there, and it'll let you know, and hopefully it'll be less intrusive than interrupting speakers as you're going through your discussion. So thank you so much. Step up to the podium.
Hi, my name is Kelly Hutchins. I live at 115 Park Street. My landlord is Pine Valley Realty. I've lived there for 15 years. I was born here, raised here, and would like to stay here. East Hampton is my home. I misspoke the last time that I was here. I mentioned that my rent went up 51.5%. I was wrong. It went up 54%. When I was told my rent was going up 54%, I asked, "Is there any wiggle room?" That's a huge increase every month. I was told no, due to the increase of water, property tax, insurance, and maintenance repairs. My landlord is a local man who has inherited all of his properties from his father. There needs to be a balance between profiting off of properties and tenants staying in their homes. On the topic of maintenance, with last night's snowstorm, a plow didn't show up to my apartment until 11:30 PM last night, only clearing the driving path. I happened to drive past three more of his properties on my way to work today, and their parking lots looked the same. When I got home at around 2:00, there was still no progress with my parking lot. I called the office and I asked if a plow would be coming today. The response was, "We have four plows out working on it." As of now, the snow and ice still sits in my parking lot. This is unacceptable. I'm sure he has taken the time to clear his driveway properly. Being frustrated with this large rent increase, I joined the East Hampton Tenants Union, where I met many other tenants going through the same things. Many of us have asked to renegotiate. The response has been no. Again, this is a local landlord. Over the last month or so, I've spoken to many people who are leaving East Hampton because they can't afford the rent. Some rent increases have gone as high as 64%, and those who chose not to sign a new lease, well, the landlord has started the eviction process. I'm asking for your help to keep East Hampton sustainable and affordable for all who make it a beautiful city to live in. Thank you.
Thank you. Please feel free to move the microphone however you wish to position it.
I'm too short. Good evening. My name is Laura Connor. I live at 324 Main Street, and my landlord is Pine Valley Realty. I come to you as a board, not to complain, but to inform you what is happening to the citizens of East Hampton. In October, my rent was increased by 47%, $350. I was informed that this increase was due to the landlord wanting to get ahead of rent control. Also, the rent was increased due to water, electricity, and maintenance going up. A side note concerning maintenance, I do not have maintenance on weekends. I do, I was told that there is an emergency number to call, but no one answers. I was recently informed that if I had a problem on the weekend, I was to call the non-emergency police number, and they would contact the landlord. Due to this increase, I have had to come out of retirement. I retired three years ago after working for three doctors in Northampton for over 30 years. Presently, I do not want to move. My family and my support system are here in East Hampton, and I have lived here for over 40 years. Of note, elderly housing has a five-to-10-year waiting list, and there are 4,000 people on that list. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Don Shavanas. I'm a veteran, living in East Hampton since 2009. I was kinda surprised when I learned that the rent was going up, but the surprise was not the rent going up, but the amount that it was going up. So it's best for me to describe it in percentages, and so my rent went up over 64%. So I guess I got a break because he could have went up 100%. So I'm wondering, what's the limit here? What kind of voice does the community have? Because I don't think buildings make a community. People make the community. And I just wanted to know, can we rely on the council for some input and some help with this? Because obviously, this landlord doesn't want to come to the table and probably feel like it's not worth it, and there's nothing compelling him to do that. So I think that's a behavior that's bad if we just let it go unattended.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone?
Please, I would like to make...
Just hold one second. Anyone online? I was about to ask, and I heard a voice. If you could raise your hand on the list, on the computer, that would be great, and you'll be recognized. I will allow one more person, and then we're gonna take a break and go to the public hearings. So Paul, please unmute yourself. Paul Finn.
Thank you. Oh, and I'm afraid I'm having a little bit of echo. I don't know if you could maybe mute, or it's okay. Can you hear me all right?
We can hear you fine here.
Great. So good evening. I'm afraid contrary to the name, my name is George Finn, but...
George.
In any case, my name is George, and I'm a project manager for a local power. We're a business based in Williamsburg, here north of Massachusetts, although we're also active in New York and California. For the last 30 years, we've worked in decarbonization with municipalities such as Cambridge, San Francisco, Ithaca, to create sort of cutting-edge policies and legislation. The last five years, we became particularly interested in waste, both as a source of carbon and landfills and methane emissions, greenhouse gases, but also PFAS, the problem of PFAS. PFAS are very common in consumer goods, and therefore in waste, and cause a variety of problems, including cancer. And the current ways of disposing with this substance in waste, we maintain, is insufficient. And so we sought out an alternative and essentially make a project of finding alternative. At the moment, we have identified a technology and company which we think can go a long way towards improving this, and we would like to build a facility using this technology. Hello?
You have 30 seconds.
Okay. And are interested and are seeking interest from municipalities. And so I'm here tonight to ask if you would be interested in a presentation for us to further explain it to you.
Thank you. Let me say that we don't respond to anyone during public speak time, so we're not allowed for open meeting law purposes to not address specific issues. Sometimes we can say certain things. We certainly can say, "Please, I'll give you my number. Feel free to call me. It's 413-575-6009." And I'd be happy to discuss scheduling anything with anybody at any time about anything. So that being said, please feel free to do that, or to follow up with the city clerk with any information.
I will do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will continue public speak just after this. We're gonna have to put it on pause for a moment and open the public hearing. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second to open up the public hearings. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes, have it. This, public hearings are now open. We'll be discussing, oh, looks like deja vu, the park grant and Land and Water Conservation Trust Group grant for the Spray Park. If you are having the deja vu, we did talk about this, but there's some little differences, nuances that we're addressing. Councillor Peak.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, so these are both grants that we approved CPA appropriations for. They, then, once that was effective, the grant went out, the grant was approved, and so as a result of that, we just need to make a, do a resolution and make a motion authorizing the city to appropriate and spend the full amount, not just the amount that we funded. The rest of the money will come in, but just for legal purposes, we need to authorize them to spend up to the full amount of the project.
Does everybody understand? Okay. Are there any questions? Would you care to read the resolution?
Sure. So I've got two of them, and I'll do the park grant first, but that is the exact same principle for both of these grants.
Right, and then we'll entertain any public comment on that.
Yes. So start with the park grant. Okay, here's the resol, I'll do the resol, I think that we have to vote, if I'm not mistaken, for the resolution and then for the funding authorization, so we'll do the resolution first. A resolution to file and accept grants with and from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts' Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs for the Parkland acquisitions and renovations for Communities Grant Program for the East Hampton All Wheels, or, yes, that's this one, right? Yep. Yep, for the East Hampton All Wheels Park. Whereas, the Millside Park is a community-wide asset providing outdoor recreation to city residents and residents of surrounding communities, and has been identified as a critical city resource for upgrades in the city's 2021 Open Space and Recreation Plan. Whereas, Millside Park is dedicated to park and recreation purposes under Mass. General Law Chapter 45, Section 3, and the city is working to add an all-wheels park on a portion of Millside Park city-owned parcel, of the Millside Park city-owned parcel. Whereas, to meet said appropriation with funds transferred and/or borrowed in accordance with Mass. General Law Chapter 293, the Community Preservation Act, and authorize the treasurer with the approval of the city council to issue any bonds or notes that may be necessary for that purpose, as authorized by Mass. General Law Chapter 44, or any other enabling authority. Whereas, the parks direct, whereas, yeah, the parks director be authorized to file on behalf of the city of East Hampton the park grant applications. Whereas, the East Hampton All Wheels Park project will cost a total of $750,000, of which the city shall appropriate the full amount of $750,000. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor or his or her designee be and is hereby authorized to file and accept grants from the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, and that the mayor or his designee be and is hereby authorized to take such other actions as are necessary to carry out the purpose and conditions of this grant, to be administered by the Parks and Recreation Department and other city officials, and that this resolution will, shall take effect upon passage.
I will invite the public at this time. Should there be any comment on the matter? In the audience? Going once, going twice? Online? Please raise your hand. This is the time to speak. Seeing none, we, have you read the resolution?
I'll read that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Thank you. We have the motion, and the resolution's been read. A second? All those, any questions from anybody? Any issues? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Okay. So...
Part two.
The vote two is the funding authorization vote. I'm ready to make that motion. I don't know if anyone wants to say anything beforehand.
Is there any comment on the issue of the acceptance of the Land and Water Conservation Trust Grant for the Nonotuck Spray Park? Online? Now's the time to raise your hand. Not seeing anyone from the public. Any councillors have a question for Councillor Peak? No. Councillor Peak.
Okay. This language is, it's fine, it's just a little different than the way that they're normally written, so if I stumble over anything, just forgive me. I will make a motion to see if the city will vote to raise, borrow, or appropriate $750,000 to pay for the East Hampton All Wheels Park on a portion of land known as Millside Park to be managed and controlled by the city's Parks and Recreation Department in accordance with Chapter 45, Section 3, for active recreational purposes. And to meet said appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the mayor or designee is authorized to borrow $750,000 to pay the cost of the project, and in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 7, and/or Chapter 44B, Section 11, and/or any other enabling authority or issue, and issue bonds or notes of the city, and that the mayor or their designee be authorized to file on behalf of the city of East Hampton any and all applications deemed necessary under the park grant, or any other applications for funds in any way connected to the scope of this project. And the mayor or their designee be authorized to enter into all agreements and execute any and all instruments, including the conveyance of perpetual conservation restrictions in accordance with Mass. General Law Chapter 184 as required by Section 12A of Chapter 44B or Chapter 293, Section 10 of the Acts of 1998 as amended.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Whoa, wait a minute, we have.
Got in there.
Councillor Denham. Under the wire.
Under the wire. Thank you. Again, I just wanna, I mentioned this the other day at the finance meeting, I just wanna thank the people who worked on this. Obviously, this took a number of years, and I think I commend your persistence and your dedication to the young people of East Hampton and the community that you're trying to build with those young people and their families, and any other community member who wants to be able to utilize this particular space. So I know that a lot of time and effort and frustration and went into that, so your efforts tonight do not go unnoticed. So thank you to you and your persistence.
Thank you, Councillor Denham. Anyone else? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Now we gotta do the same thing, but for the Spray Park. So here's the resolution. Does anyone want to say anything before I make this resolution in the form of a motion? All right. All right, I'm making this in the form of a motion.
Seeing none, go right ahead.
LWCF Nonotuck Spray Park renovation and improvement city council resolution. A resolution to file and accept grants with and from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts' Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs for the Land and Water Conservation Fund for the Nonotuck Park Spray Park renovations and improvements. Whereas, the Nonotuck Spray Park is a community-wide asset providing outdoor recreation to city residents and residents of surrounding communities, and has been identified as a critical resource in need of upgrade in the city's 2021 Open Space and Recreation Plan. Whereas, Nonotuck Park is dedicated to park and recreation purposes under Mass. General Law Chapter 45, Section 3, and the city is working to upgrade the Spray Park facilities, increase accessibility, providing additional features and shade structures on a portion of the 270-acre city-owned parcel. Whereas, to meet said appropriation with funds transferred and/or borrowed in accordance with Mass. General Law Chapter 293, the Community Preservation Act, and to authorize the treasurer with the approval of the city council to issue any bonds or notes that may be necessary for that purpose, as authorized by Mass. General Law Chapter 44, or any other enabling authority. Whereas, the park director be authorized to file on behalf of the city of East Hampton the LWCF grant applications. Whereas, the Nonotuck Park, the Nonotuck Spray Park renovation and improvement project will cost a total of $529,000, of which the city shall appropriate the full amount of $529,000. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor or his or her designee be and is hereby authorized to file and accept grants from the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, and that the mayor or his or her designee be and is hereby authorized to take such other actions as are necessary to carry out the purpose and conditions of this grant to be administered by the Parks and Recreation Department or other city officials, and that this resolution shall take effect upon passage.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this? In the audience? Online? Please raise your hand. Now would be the time. Going once, going twice? Seeing none.
Did that as the form of a motion? Second.
Then we'll take the second. We have a question here.
Just a second.
We have the second. Yes, you saw it. Okay. And there's no further discussion? Excellent. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
All right.
Concludes your portion, right?
Just one more.
No, we gotta do the second one.
The funding authorization for the second one. Trust me, no one wants this to be over more than me.
Do it.
All right.
By the way, your reading is much better than this. It's okay. This is great practice.
All right. So do we, this is just the same thing. If there's anyone who has anything to say, just, we're gonna be doing that same thing, but in a vote for a funding authorization.
Anyone from the public? Anyone online? I guess you get one more chance, right? All right. Seeing none. Please continue.
I will make a motion to see if the city will vote to raise, borrow, and/or appropriate $529,000 to pay for the Nonotuck Spray Park renovations and improvements on land known as Nonotuck Park that is managed and controlled by the city's Parks and Recreation Department in accordance with Chapter 45, Section 3, for active recreation purposes. And to meet said appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the mayor or designee is authorized to borrow $529,000 to pay the cost of project in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 7, and/or Chapter 44B, Section 11, and/or any other enabling authority, and issue bonds or notes of the city, and that the mayor or their designee be authorized to file the LWCF grant, PL88-578, on behalf of the city of East Hampton, or any other applications for funds in any way connected to the scope, with the scope of this project. The mayor or their designee be authorized to enter into all agreements and execute any and all instruments.
Second.
Motion and a second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Thank you. You're welcome. No more, right?
Yes.
Okay. Next we come to the issue of short-term rental zoning ordinance amendments and definitions and tables. And we'll be calling on Counselor Denham, Chair of the Ordinance Committee, to lead us with the discussion.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. So, since last March, uh, essentially, the Ordinance Committee has been meeting, um, regularly, um, to address the matter of short-term, um, rentals in, uh, in the city. Um, for, for a number of years, they have been operating, um, without any ordinance, um, and, um, or guidance, uh, et cetera. Um, and, um, as a result of that, um, it was brought to my attention that, you know, there's some liability in regards to that for, for the city. Um, and so we, uh, the Ordinance Committee, um, began working on, um, an ordinance that was initially brought, uh, forward by, uh, Counselor Peak and then, uh, Counselor Derby. Um, and through that process of working with the Planning Department, as well as the Fire Department, um, and the Building Department, and, and more recently, our Health Department, uh, to address kind of this, um, ordinance and how best we can, um, manage it. Right? Um, I think when we initially started, um, there was, uh, a lot of concern, um, in regards to a recognition of that, uh, individuals who were hosts, who were, uh, running, um, these, uh, short-term rentals, um, to, to be transparents, uh, had received guidance, uh, that they, uh, believed to be, um, in accordance with expectations of the city, and began to, uh, operate their, uh, short-term, uh, rentals. And so, um, there's an acknowledgement of, um, that experience, uh, on their part. Um, also, I think that there is, so through the work of this, there's some recognition that we are, um, in a, uh, housing crisis. Um, and as we saw again tonight, there's some concern around rent increases, um, and not just rent increases, but just housing, housing increases and people's ability to be able to stay in their homes, which I believe that, um, some individuals use this to supplement their, um, um, mortgages, uh, as well as some people use these opportunities to, um, address other kind of, uh, needs. Um, at the same time, there is, and we can talk more about this, uh, which, I know we will talk more about this, um, there's a number of just state codes, uh, in regards to fire and building codes, um, that we had to both learn about, um, and try to understand. Um, and there's just a number of, of, uh, factors depending on length of time that the short-term rental during that particular year, or during the year is in operation, and kind of, kind of expectations for safety, et cetera. Um, and so those were a number of conversations, uh, that were had. Um, and then also, within here too, there's a number of items, uh, of particular interest, I'm sure that people have been reaching out to councilors, around caps. Um, we set a cap at 50, which I can talk more about. Um, but that was specifically, uh, just in recognition to the fact that we had passed the resolution, uh, regarding, uh, rent stabilization and the potential impact of, um, if we kind of opened the door up for any number of, uh, short-term rental, uh, registrations, then how might that impact, um, uh, people's rent, right? So, that was a concern. Uh, there's a concern around number of days. Uh, I, I think that was in the, in the same kind of vein of, of kind of concern around rent and trying to balance what other cities have been doing. Um, and then there's just also a number of, of more recent items related to, um, uh, fire safety, um, which we can also talk a little bit more about. But that's the general overview of, of some of the, the key points that we had talked about. Um, I think that, you know, through this, there's a number of definitions, um, registration requirements. We initially started out with, um, having this go through the Licensing Board, and that was specifically related to, we wanted to be able to have a public process, um, so that if there were complaints or anything like that regarding a particular short-term rental, that the neighbors of those short-term rentals had the opportunity to be able to come forward and say, hey, I have some concerns about this, et cetera. Um, but, uh, in the last, uh, couple of months, we learned that this is actually right up the alley of the, uh, Health Department, right? The, the Board of Health. So, um, for them to be able to, uh, take on the responsibility of, uh, man, managing those, uh, registrations, and it need be creating a process by which, um, individuals, um, who may have concerns about short-term rentals can, can come through and have those discussions. So, I think, as you probably hopefully have read, right? I don't want to go through each and every one of these things, but, um, I think that there was a lot of thought and consideration, um, put into this. I think that there was a number of items here that, uh, were probably very new, uh, for the, um, hosts of short-term rentals. Uh, I think there was a lot of things that were probably unexpected regarding codes and things like that, that were not, um, known, or that people were unaware of. Uh, and so we tried to take a lot of those factors into consideration. Um, one item that is not in here, but we can talk about later, as I have a proposed res, uh, proposed, proposed amendment, um, regarding renewal of, um, of, uh, short-term rentals, um, which is in line with some other, uh, renewal processes within the city, um, and as well as, again, recognizing the, um, recognizing the, um, experience of, uh, current hosts, uh, within that process, who I think have been, um, operating, um, to the best of their ability, um, within the city, and so just kind of acknowledging, um, that, that particular experience and, and making sure that those individuals who put a great deal of money, time, energy into that, um, will have the ability to be able to, um, begin the process of, um, registering their short-term rental. But I also want to acknowledge that in the middle of this, the part of why this has taken so long is, um, we had an interim mayor who, uh, was on council, so that took a little bit of, uh, wind out of our sails. Then we had to bring, uh, President Kozinski up to speed on, uh, that particular process. Um, and then also, I think that there was some, uh, last-minute additions that, uh, the Building Department and, uh, the Fire Department wanted to add, uh, which they felt, um, provided some, uh, or addressed, uh, additional concerns that they had had regarding this. But that's kind of the overview, but happy to answer questions or anything like that that people might have.
Are there any questions at this time from anyone on the council? Thank you.
I can give more context to it, and for any of this, if there are questions.
I appreciate that. Uh, it might be helpful to hear from the public at this time?
Actually, I think it would probably be more helpful to hear from our departments.
Be helpful to hear from the departments.
Yes.
Their perspectives on it also. Uh, let's go with the departments. I see the chief moving toward the podium. We always love to see you here. Chief Norris.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you. Um, I think what will be helpful is, so we're talking about short-term rentals, obviously, and the proposals are before you tonight. And because this falls under the purview of the building, um, the state building codes, it would be helpful to have our building inspector come up first and give an overview and the framework of what's actually required in the building code. And then we'll back into how we got to the proposal before you. So we'll have Dave come up and, and give you that framework first.
Mr. Building Inspector.
Hi.
So, could you identify yourself as such?
Dave Gardner, Building Commissioner. Uh, I'm also a resident of East Hampton, but, um, I will stick, uh, just completely with, uh, my, uh, my role in the city as the Building Commissioner at this time. Uh, would be, I wondered, you know, if it would be okay if I come up during, uh, a little bit later and speak as a resident, because I have concerns.
I see no reason why you should not be allowed to do so.
Great, thank you. Um, so, um, building code. So, it changed. The 10th edition, uh, came into full effect July 1st of this year. It now has, uh, in it requirements for short-term rentals, specifically safety, um, requirements. Uh, its default in the building code is a 13D sprinkler system. As soon as you mentioned sprinkler system, people kind of tense up because they're expensive. A 13D system is not the kind you normally see, um, at commercial locations. This one is, um, plastic piping. It's, uh, it's a source of, uh, water, is potable water source in the building. Um, it's, uh, meant to prevent flashover, so people can get out statistically, about 11 minutes, that gives people to get out safely. Um, but, um, causes a lot of damage, water, they, there are, there's potential for, and it, it has happened, for accidental deployment, uh, from, uh, heads are exposed generally. It can be installed in a, in a way where they're not so exposed, but there are stories of, uh, teenagers playing around, for instance, with frisbees inside a house or whatever, and hitting a head, and suddenly the place has got all this water damage. So, um, the good thing from my perspective is that, um, most of the short-term rentals will be taking place in existing buildings. So, building code is actually broken down into two very, uh, for residential code, two very different, uh, codes. One is new residential, and one is existing residential. Uh, for new buildings, anytime there's a requirement for sprinklers, any exception to that has to go to an appeals board at state level. For existing buildings, the local authority, that would be me in this case, has the, uh, option of accepting an alternative, uh, to sprinklers that meets or exceeds the same level of safety. Um, and, well, so, the question that has been asked to me, like, right away is, so sprinklers, that's, that's water, fire alarm system, which I would accept, is, um, how could that meet the same level of safety? So sprinkler systems don't require any monitoring. They deploy some, whatever's going on, they go off. No, no monitoring by the Fire Department, there's no alarm associated with it. So, they can simply just deploy, and that's it. Nobody knows, unless somebody calls the Fire Department. An alarm system is monitored, does notify Fire Department through dispatch. Any number of, uh, reasons I believe that's safer and a better system is that the alarm systems also have not just smoke detectors and heat detectors, but CO detectors. Carbon monoxide is deadly. It's odorless, can't see it, and if somebody is staying at a short-term rental, they may have been there for the very first time, they don't know what's, they don't know the way out, but I'll get into that in just a moment. But CO detecting, uh, CO detection is important, because, um, people in a short-term rental, well, they're probably there many times because they're on vacation. You know, they're in vacation mode. They might be relaxing, drinking, um, and thinking that they're coming, they're, they're under the influence of alcohol. That's what's making them sleepy. They fall asleep. It could be carbon monoxide. If the carbon monoxide detector goes off, Fire Departments are notified, you know, will notification, first responders show up. And I think that that's far safer than a sprinkler system that has no other, um, notification, uh, no reason that, uh, first responders would show up. So, when the proposal to, for an alternative approach to fire safety was, uh, brought up involving a residential-type, um, fire alarm system that's monitored, that is something that I would gladly accept as an alternative to sprinklers, in most cases. Now, there are in the building code, uh, any new places that are built. For instance, an ADU, that's a new building. If somebody has an ADU, um, and they want to use it as a short-term rental, uh, is calling for sprinklers, uh, that has to go to an appeals board to get an exception to that. But any of the pre-existing buildings use the short-term rentals, then an alternative can be accepted. Um, now, for anybody who doesn't know the difference, uh, short-term rental, uh, is 30 days or under. So any, any building, any portion of a home rented for greater than 30 days, not affected by any of this. So that still leaves vacation rentals, which are pretty popular, uh, I don't know how about, how popular around here, they're not short-term rentals, that's just a vacation rental, not affected by this. Non-transient is, um, greater than 30 days. So, again, not, not affected by any of this. We're just talking about 30 days or under. Uh, the draft proposal actually has a, uh, states 28 days. Uh, the reason for that is because the, uh, one of particular Airbnb sets that as the, their standard, because February has 28 days. So, they're looking at months, and they're looking all over the world for, for their contractual arrangement, uh, with their partners, as they call them, in Airbnb. But the, um, the actual, uh, transient, non-transient is 30 days or under is non-tran, is, uh, is transient, over 30 days is non-transient. So that's very important stuff. Also worth mentioning is that the building code is, there's really no, uh, a municipality really has no, uh, you can't change the building code in a municipality. The building code is statewide. It is what it is. And just, and not every municipality does this, but East Hampton actually did this. In its ordinance, it adopted the building code and all of the, uh, uh, subsequent additions with amendments and everything else. So, not only is it building code, but it's also in our ordinance as being fully accepted. So there is really no exception to, uh, to all of these places being subject to the building code. Uh, this, by the way, is retroactive. It goes back to any, uh, short-term rental that came into use, uh, beginning on, and I don't know why, but October 17th, 2017, and moving forward. So it is retroactive. And again, there, there's no way around recognizing that that is what the building code is, and then how do we apply that to the circumstances that we're faced with, uh, in constructing an ordinance for regulating short-term rentals? So, um, any, any questions so far? Any, anything? All right.
Jonathan? Counselor Schmidt?
Can I pre, context first?
I defer to Connie.
Counselor Denham.
Thank you. I just want to make clear that, uh, the alternative that, uh, Building Commissioner Gardner is speaking about is found under, uh, 4-50.5, Requirements for Short-Term Rental Operations. And if you go to C, it is, uh, point four, where it says, uh, there shall be installed a whole-house smoke alarm system which shall incorporate carbon monoxide detection. The system shall be installed to the current Massachusetts building code. Such a system shall be monitored 24/7 by an approved central station monitoring company. That does not mean the Fire Department, that just means a third-party potentially. Uh, the alarm system shall be tested and inspected by an approved, authorized, et cetera. I, I want to acknowledge that, yes, this was, uh, described to the, um, to the- I want to acknowledge that, yes, this was described to the, to the committee as an alternative. And when we were talking, we talked about a variety of different alternatives depending on size of room, size of space, et cetera. And so, I can only speak for myself, I understood that it could be a variety of different alternatives depending on the situation. And so, I just want to acknowledge that if we adopt that section under four, East Hampton will be the most regulated short-term rental community in the entire state. And so, I, I just want to acknowledge that, that, you know, this, this was what we understood to be an alternative and it was offered to us as something that was now codified within this ordinance. The committee did vote to accept these, but I think there was a limited amount of time when we had this and that was the last meeting that we had before this particular meeting. And so, I just want to acknowledge for myself, and I want to take responsibility that I didn't fully understand in the particular moment, the impact that this would, that this would have on our host within the community. I fully recognize the, the concerns of the fire department and the, and the building department, but I think it is important to note that the impact that this will actually have within our city and, and what that means. So, I just want to acknowledge that and give that context.
Yeah, can I address that? Is that appropriate? You just said something that I find challenging. You said the most regulated in the state. The default mode for any portion of a home uses a short-term rental or in a building is sprinklers. So, am I to understand from what you said that there's no place in the state that is requiring sprinklers for short-term rentals?
I think that there's a lot of short-term rentals that don't have sprinkler systems within their state because I think what they found was they found other alternatives to be able to address that that did not include sprinklers. So, I've stayed in short-term rentals throughout the state recently on the Cape, in the Berkshires, and I didn't see any sprinklers within that. So, that suggests to me that the Building Commissioner in that particular community found an alternative to having a sprinkler system within there. And they only had not hardwired smoke detectors, they just had battery-operated, whatever. And so, I'm just, I'm just saying that this is more than what I've seen in other communities.
So, it's anecdotal evidence. You, you didn't really do the research to find out what sort of enforcement or if they've even gotten around to doing it yet. This is still fairly new, a lot of communities are still dealing with this. I know what some of the surrounding communities are doing. I speak to the Building Commissioners in those communities and I know what they're doing. So, it would kind of not follow your anecdotal observation of staying in, as you just described. That's all, I'm just saying. This is not, you made a statement that was very strong statement, the most regulated in the state, but that's just based on your observation, staying at Airbnbs in other parts of the state.
So, I think to your own admission, right, in the meeting, right, you had said that in fact, there were alternatives. And so, you gave us examples in South Hadley, so that suggests to me that this was not something that was required in South Hadley from your professional experience and that you found other alternatives to be able to work with those individuals who were managing those short-term rentals.
No, actually, in South Hadley, I did exactly what we're describing here, what's in here as the alternative. That's what was done in South Hadley in two places when I was there. So, that is what happened there.
Well, that's not how it was explained to us because, but whatever, but doesn't matter. Go ahead.
So, I did want to say that.
I was just going to say it sounds like there's a little more back and forth than usually we have at this level of an ordinance meeting. And I just wanted to note, just wanted to note that, just to note that.
Yeah, okay.
Not to stop the discussion as it were.
I understand, I'm just a little surprised by the comments because the ordinance committee voted unanimously to approve this draft. And now I'm hearing that there's some backs, you know, a little bit of anecdotal like influencing, something that's really not being accepted in that which was unanimously approved in this draft, that's all.
So, it sounds like there may be some, some additional questions on the ordinance level, ordinance committee level. That's, that's what I'm really saying is that normally we don't have that here, that takes place at the ordinance committee level. Counselor, please.
I just want to acknowledge that, I think Counselor Schmidt had his hand up a while.
I do, I mean, I'm happy to let this play out, honestly.
I did not, did not see it.
It's all good. If we're ready, you know, I, I have other questions.
Okay.
I would also just note that a strong statement, I don't know that is necessarily in any way speaking against, you know, the ordinance that was passed, but not having been there, I can't, I can't say for sure. And in that regard, you know, obviously I'm a latecomer to this whole thing. I've been trying to do my best to get up to speed over the past several weeks, knowing that this was upcoming. And so, forgive me if any of my questions are ignorant or ill-informed or already answered. But regarding specifically the sprinkler requirement or an alternative as provided, I did notice there's one place in the ordinance that references sprinklers, that then references back to a particular part of Mass General Law. And in that Mass General Law, it seems to only apply to lodgings where six or more individuals will be staying. And so, my question is if, if the, if the sprinkler requirement is indeed only for those dwellings of, that are going to have six or more people, as my reading suggests, does that mean that alternatives to the sprinklers would also only be relevant to those dwellings? Does that make sense?
Yeah, that's, that's totally different case entirely. You're talking about Mass General Law 148, that's been actually out there since 2005. That's something that's enforced by the fire department strictly, has nothing to do with Building Code. So, we're, so, yeah, and I know a lot of people get, they see that and they get hung up on that. But no, the Building Code is totally separate. And the 10th Edition, which is now in force, requires sprinklers in short-term rentals. And again, 13D sprinkler system where what you're talking about there may not have been a 13D system, it could have been our system, anyway. But, yeah, any?
If I could just follow up on that real quick. I guess, I, I see it as a potential point for, for confusion, especially as other folks have brought up in the community, the issue of the sprinkler requirement, again, it's, as far as I can tell, the only place where they are specifically referenced. And so, if people are searching for that and they see that Mass General Law being referenced, they're going to go there and they're going to miss the fact that there is a new edition of Building Code. I just wanted to note that.
Yeah, one of the conversations that we, yeah, one of the conversations that we had with, within the context of the requirements for sprinklers or smoke detectors, et cetera, was the cap of five, because then when you do get to a cap, or then when you do get into six or seven or eight, right, that falls under a different category of what that particular short-term rental might be, which is a lodging house or a boarding house, et cetera. So, if, if there is a short-term, or there's a host that's hosting six people, then they have to have a sprinkler system. If they're hosting five people, then it could be some alternative. That was how it was explained to us.
Thank you, I saw Counselor Newton first, so please.
Is there a second alternative? So, given the alternative of the whole wired whole-house system that connects to a third-party, do you offer a second alternative?
Well, alternatives, so the way it's, it's supposed to work is there's a requirement to do something and the property owner would then say, make a proposal and say, well, due to the circumstances, I would propose this as an alternative. And then it would be up to me to look at the circumstances and accept that or not. And then within two weeks, I have to send that alternative to, to BBRS for, not really approval, but just to, for their file. But so, it really is, it's meant to, because it's, it's in existing Building Code, it's meant to address circumstances which could not be anticipated and to allow for use of a building in a different way. And where there might be some limitations where a new building for that specific use, you can say, well, it's existing, how can we make this work?
There are other ways besides the whole-house system, not sprinkler, I'm not talking about sprinklers, but the detector system that is linked to a third-party. You're saying there are other ways, other alternatives?
Well, what would happen if the, if, what is proposed in the ordinance is not adopted in the ordinance? If it doesn't survive this vote, then it would be a case-by-case basis. In other words, there would be no set thing and it would be based on an inspection of the building. Now, I have, there are some situations where, I'll use South Hadley as an example. One of those places, they also installed an emergency light in a hallway because the room that was being rented was buried kind of in the house a bit. And there was a hornstrop installed in the room. And that's to accommodate people who had, might be hard of hearing or diminished sight, you know? So, it made sense that if, if a detection, if the detection system went off, that a hornstrop would go off and then these folks could find their way out down an illuminated hallway to the door. In the other room, in the other situation, I did not require those things. So, it really is a case-by-case basis and it's, it's, it's up to, it's, it's, it's up to my discretion depending on what I see, but not, again, it could be case-by-case. It is case-by-case. What I was hoping, and my, my hope is that this, what is proposed in the draft survives and then there is a, a system, an approach that everybody experiences. And it certainly is a, a good approach, I think. And there's no guesswork in it, it's just what it is. I might go into a place and realize that, yeah, this is a pretty big place, pretty convoluted, maybe a sprinkler system is appropriate in this case. And that is the default in the Building Code, that is what would be required. Again, I'm no fan of sprinklers, that's why I tend to lean toward an alarm system which would then bring first responders to the site.
Counselor Denham?
Yeah, I'd, so again, I just, so I appreciate you saying that because that was how this was explained to us, right? That it was a case-by-case situation, right? And within this, there is no case-by-case anything anymore. What we're saying is that people have to have this particular system, right? And this is expensive, right? And having spoken to a number of our hosts and getting some information, a, a lot of people who are working and hosting, they're not making the kind of money and, and revenue that is happening on the Cape or that is happening in the Berkshires, right? One senior said, "Last year I made $4,000," and that is just a small amount to help them ease the cost and the tension of their mortgage, right? One person said $10,000. One person who is short-term renting their house, renting, sorry, renting, I caught myself there, renting their house, right? They're using that money to subsidize long-term care for their parent who now has dementia, right? Like, I think that there is a human side to this that we're actually not talking about. And so, I just want to acknowledge that these things are in fact expensive. But I appreciate you saying that because in our understanding through that, it was a case-by-case situation. And this particular item, there is no more case-by-case. What we're saying is, is that hosts now have to, have to adhere to this particular thing. And again, yes, we did vote three to zero, but we did not have enough time to be able to actually think about the ramifications of that.
Counselor Jazek?
Thank you. I want to go back to what Counselor Schmidt brought up around some of the confusion, specifically with the definition of short-term rentals and to that section, I think it's section C6 around, or C7 around the MGL 148. And so, there is, to me, I was also confused about that because in the definition that this ordinance puts forth, it says that any properly licensed bed and breakfast, hotel, motel or lodging house, as those are defined and permitted, should not be considered a short-term rental. And then we have this section that brings up the idea of the lodging house. So, I think that that's an example of some confusion bolstered by what Counselor Denham was just speaking to around the, whether there's alternatives or not. So, I am wondering a little bit as to what your thoughts are with this current ordinance as written because by your own admission, it does feel like there's some confusion here and I'm, I'm wondering if you feel like this is ready to go at this point.
I'm not confused by it at all. When I read it, when we left the ordinance meeting, I thanked the committee for, for their vote because it, by the end of that meeting, there didn't seem to be any confusion on, on my part. I was happy for it.
There's confusion tonight and so, even there's redundancy. So, I'm just, I'm curious what your thoughts are even hearing.
Well, so bringing 148 back into it, that's, that's a lodging house. So, in the Building Code, it says, it just applies to, it'll even say lodging house is used as short-term rentals. So, actually, the definition for short-term rental comes from Mass General Law 64G. That's where it all started. So, that is the definition for short-term rental. It gets confusing there because specifically it says that it is not a hotel or a motel or a lodging house or any of these things. But then the Building Code comes in and says, "A lodging house used as a short-term rental," you know? And so, the reason for 64G was to establish the ability for short-term operators to get insurance primarily and for taxation purposes. So, rooming tax, like the hotels and motels have to pay. By the way, hotels and motels require sprinklers. Even motels that have doors that go right outside, you're, you have a single room, you open the door and you're out of the building, but they require sprinklers. So, just for comparison, and those are businesses that have to compete now with short-term rentals who are, you know, for, in a lot of cases, the place has already been built, they're running it out of their home or, or a home that they don't even occupy. But, so the definition comes from 64G and there's also things in 64G that require some of the things that were brought up early, just legal.
Can I clarify something?
Sure, oh yeah, go ahead, yeah, sure.
Dan Constantine, I'm the Fire Prevention Officer. I just want to clarify the, the sprinkler as far as MGL 148, 26H. So, two different things we're talking about here. Dave's talking about the Building Code, the sprinklers under the Building Code, right? That's his pervy, okay? 148, Section 26H is law, okay? It's not code, it's law. So, it's, it's, it holds a lot more weight, right? That falls under the fire department, okay? And that's administered by the AHJ, which is the, which is the fire chief. So, in this, in this particular instance, even if the Building Commissioner were, or if we have the alternative put in as far as the fire alarm system goes, if there's a short-term rental that has, that rents to six or more that are not to the second kindred, 148, Section 26H kicks in and they have to sprinkle the building, no matter what the Building Code says. So, I just want, does that clarify a little bit better as far as that goes? So, it's two different things. And so, even if they have this system, they still, under the, under the, under the law, they still, if they're, if they're renting to six or more, they're not to the second kindred, they still have to sprinkle the building. And that would be an order that would be issued by the, by the fire chief. And there was an appeal process for that too and such, but I just want, is that, is that a little clearer now?
Yeah, that's clear. I guess, if I may. I guess I'm, I'm mostly thinking from the context of, of the public who doesn't have, you know, the benefit of all of this. There's just something about including that when it is so different from everything else that we're talking about here that I think felt. that we're talking about here that I think felt confusing and that I think will result in future confusion. That's all I would say. It makes sense that, you know, I think what you're saying makes sense. And I certainly understand, you know, anything that rises to the, to that number of people will be held accountable. It just seems like kind of above and beyond what we're talking about here. And I think it makes sense to include, you know, something else about the sprinklers if, you know, there's regulations and stuff in building code that are separate from that.
The idea pointed in was for transparency. So everybody knew upfront that this was, this was, you know, if they put in the, if they put in the alarm system, all of a sudden they get this order. I just want to make sure they know upfront that there's this other law that's out there under the fire department.
Right, right. I think the important piece, and thank you for that. I appreciate that. Again, it goes back to the number of people that you're having, right? But also within that context of that kind of lodging house, as you said, that's a requirement, right? And so as much as we'd like to make this an easy read, right? I think anyone who's interested in doing this, I think they're just going to have to dig in. And there's some level of accountability of understanding the laws and kind of what you're getting into.
Just as I thought I was really beginning to fully understand this, I had a question. And that was brought up by Mr. Constantine. Your comment was very clear, it seemed, that over six or more, non-kindred to the second requires a sprinkler system.
Correct.
Put that in here. Then everybody understands that as well as the law because it's not only in the law, it's in your ordinance. And then that would be understood. That would seem to clarify, in my mind, the issue. And then also address the separation of under five or, five or fewer people. These are the regulations. Does that help to clarify it for anybody? I don't know. Seemed to me for a moment. Am I stating it correctly to the experts in the enforcement area? Okay, that's good. All right. Counselor Jazek?
I just wanted to follow up. Thank you. I wanted to follow up on that. I think that, to me, speaks to the question I kind of brought up earlier, which is, I think, it just, this doesn't feel fully done to me because we're having these discussions. And I do, I appreciate Counselor Denham's point that there is going to be some level of accountability for people who want to engage as short-term rental hosts here in East Hampton if and when we pass this. And we don't need to create something that's unnecessarily confusing if we are confused at this level. And I know I've certainly been watching the recordings of the meetings. I've been poring over this language. And I'm no stranger to legalese. I'm confused about some of it. I do think there's a middle ground where we can elaborate some of these pieces. And this is certainly not the only section that I think warrants some reflection. But we should, it behooves us to make this as easy as possible for our current and future short-term rental hosts to be able to follow the law once we pass this. And I don't think it's going to be helpful if we pass something that is going to be out of the gate confusing when we all want the same things. We want to have people be safe, not die, you know, be able to do all the things that short-term rental hosts want to do. So I just wanted to name that because I think that there's still some language that, to me, feels missing. And this is an example of that.
Good. Counselor Peak?
Thank you, Mr. President. Okay, I just want to make sure that I understand this. And then I have a couple of questions. So what it sounds like to me is that the, and I apologize for not being more involved in this along the way because maybe I could, some of this would become more clear to me before now. But it seems to me like, in terms of this Section C here and that we've been discussing it like, that sort of, where we are is that there was a recent change in Massachusetts' building code, which would require sprinkler systems or, in the case of an existing building, an alternative that was approved by the building commissioner. Right? That's, that's the basis of this is that they're, that's there for existing buildings. And it would require, and if it was a new building, then if you wanted something other than sprinkler systems, you got to go to the state. Got that right?
Yes, yep.
Okay. So then when we put this in here, it says that there shall be installed a whole-house smoke alarm system, which is an alternative that you would generally approve of as seeing as just as safer, safer. Yeah, okay, so that makes enough sense to me. I guess if I were to see it, I might present this, present both of those options because it's possible that in some cases, one would be preferable to the other for one reason or another. And if those are both acceptable under the building code, then that's just one thing that I would, I would consider. But I guess the other question that I would have is, say that we're years down the line and we have a different building commissioner. Like, that ultimately is the building commissioner's jurisdiction, right? So if the next building commissioner says, okay, well, this is what the ordinance says, but I actually don't like carbon monoxide, I don't like these detection systems. I want it to be state. Then, then would this entire thing be sort of obviated because?
No, no. Well, once a system is approved by commissioner, that you, you have a CO, essentially you have a CO for that.
Sure, for that unit. But if a, if a unit, someone later wants to come online and they're going through a different, they're going through this process with a different, like, would?
Like the same circumstance?
This is, this is acceptable and in our ordinance because you think it's acceptable. And I think that your case for making that is very reasonable. But if, if a future person doesn't find that to be an acceptable solution, then even though it's in our ordinance, our ordinance, to your point, really doesn't have a whole lot to say about this. This is state code. And so I guess that's, maybe that's a little too hypothetical of a concern, but do you sort of see what I'm getting at?
Counselor Denham?
So in looking at this, in the, in the same frame, another building inspector could say, that's actually, I think, more than what I think needs to happen given this particular case-by-case situation.
Right. I guess I'm just nervous that we could write something in that we say this is acceptable. But ultimately, it really doesn't matter what we say. It matters what the building commissioner says. And a different building commissioner could think something different. And at that point, we've written an ordinance that gives bad guidance, I guess, is my, just, I'm always trying to think about these things, about things, you know? The, I guess the other, the other question that I would have is, like, it seems like a lot of this is written as helpful guidance to, to talk about, like, to take the existing state code and reflect the existing state code in our ordinances. And so I guess, this is more a question for the council than the department heads, although I appreciate your input as well. But like, when, because this is something that I've seen before in other cases in ordinance. Like, what happens then when the state code changes? But our ordinance still reflects an old state code that's no longer accurate? Do we run the risk of giving bad advice to people who are using this as their first touch point?
Well, this is required to be reviewed at a minimum of every two years. And so I think if there is a change, then we would work with the building inspector and the fire department, fire chief, a fire inspector as well to be able to make those amendments. Right? I think it was very intentional about being able to build in those, those review, right? Those opportunities for review to address those things. Because these things are changing, right? Like, frequently, right? So.
Yeah. No, that makes total sense. I just, I guess the one place where I have a little bit of, I think that the intention of that is really good. And I, I guess the only place where I have a little bit of the problem is like, I'm pretty sure that our charter also says that we should review all of our ordinances on every year that ends in a five. And it's a year that ends in a five, and we haven't done that. So like, I just think that, like, we do sometimes skip these things when things are hectic. And I guess I just see that as not a deal breaker for me, but a potential liability that something could change. And just in the hustle and bustle, it doesn't get updated. And then we've got an ordinance that's telling people to do things in a certain way. And that is actually not reflecting the up-to-date state requirements. So that's, again, not a deal breaker, but just a concern I wanted to flag.
Counselor Newton?
Thank you, Mr. President. Could we add, like, a clause after the install the whole house smoke alarm system where explicitly states, like, an alternative may be approved by the building inspector on a case-by-case basis? Would that help? So that's clear? But it's, it's my, it's my understanding that what the building commissioner is saying is that that is the alternative, right? I thought I asked him, is there a second alternative? And he said, yes, there is another alternative on a case-by-case basis. Isn't that what you said?
Well, only because, so this is an alternative that I would accept in, in most situations. I mean, there may be, and because of existing buildings, this is, is something that I find as being, actually, the intent is safety, getting people out of the building. And, and I find that it meets or exceeds the intent and the level of safety that sprinklers would provide. What I don't know is what's on the horizon, like, if somebody has an apartment building. So things change, right? Somebody, what if, anyway, I don't want to get too far astray. So, yeah, so is there a second alternative? It's possible, I suppose, that if I, I've not been in any of these places yet, you know? I have no idea. Every place is different. And when people ask me, what would you require for just about anything? It depends. It depends on the situation. Depends on what's there. So some places might be painfully simple. Like, you know, there could be a room with a door that goes out to back, like an immediate thing. You know, escape from the building. Would it even require anything other than notification? And a carbon monoxide detector? You know, that's, that's, for me, is a big, is a big one. Again, you have people, the reason there's a difference in the building code for, for one- and two-family dwellings that are non-transient occupied and transient occupied dwellings is because of the level of safety changes, familiarity with the building.
I understand.
You have people staying for the first time in a place. They don't know, in the middle of the night, if there's no emergency lighting, for instance, no system to alert them that something's wrong.
But I guess what I'm asking is, would you hypothetically, like, is it possible for you to accept some, an alternative to this that maybe is the person has a 10-year carbon monoxide and fire detector in each room? They have, like, a certain number of fire, what are those, extinguishers? And they have, like, an extinguisher over the stove? Like, would that be something you could accept as opposed to the hardwired?
Chief Norris, I see you on that. And if you have a comment?
Yeah. Yeah, you, yeah, okay. Yeah, so.
Because I see a little bit of difference between the building and department and the fire department and this, I maybe.
Yeah, so just, again, not to belabor this, but just to help people better understand. We, we now had an overview tonight of what the building code requires for these short-term rentals. And part of that now leads to the alternative compliance. So the building commissioner worked with Captain Constantine and I to look at, you know, what are those options? What do those options look like? And from the fire safety perspective for these occupancy, for the occupants as well as the property, we came up collaboratively with what's being proposed right now. Why did we bring this proposal forward to all of you? When you look at the occupants in these buildings, it's a transient population. People have said that already tonight. They're unfamiliar with the layout of the buildings, regardless of square footage size, length of hallways, all that. So that's the first concern from the fire safety perspective. Second concern is whether they're here for vacations, visiting families, whatever it is. When you have these occupancies, there's a higher potential for tampering with the system. So that led to the addition there of having a monitored system. So it would eliminate the potential of tampering because it would trip a supervisory alarm. The other concern, when you look at the fuel types and fuel loads across this country right now, including East Hampton, they're extremely flammable, combustible. And you don't have to look further than whether it's e-bikes, e-scooters, lithium-ion batteries. Everything around here is all synthetic-based. You heard the building commissioner talk earlier about sprinklers and how that protects flashover. I won't get into that. But by having a monitored, hardwired battery system, which was our recommendation to the building commissioner, it will help people escape those areas based on all of those conditions. So that's the reason why this alternative compliance was brought forward in the manner that it was for those reasons, for the occupants, the fuel loads, the timing to get out, the potential for people bringing in all these things. You look out across the region now, whether it's cause of fire because of overloaded circuit breakers, extension cords, things like that. It can happen here. And I'm not crying wolf. We're trying to find a balance. We're trying to find a balance between making sure the occupants are protected, their investment is protected, and trying to find that balance for financial means. So that's how this all got brought forward.
Thank you.
Is there a less, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Is there a less expensive option? So this is about $5,000 plus monthly fees. Is there anything that you deem safe enough that would be much less expensive for the owners?
It's really two separate questions you brought up. Is there a less expensive option? No, there's not. And the reason I say that is, could we sit here and work with the building commissioner and say, okay, we want to put in smoke detectors that are battery-operated, and they send out a local alarm? Okay, that would give notification. How quickly would the fire department be notified? Because it's not going to a monitored station. Are these people, are they awake? Do they know how to get out? So that system that I just described to you, a standalone battery-operated system, is not as safe as what is being proposed to you. Did I answer your question?
Yeah, I guess I'm just really trying to figure out for constituents, like, is this the hard line? Or is there something that costs less because the cost is going to be very hard for a lot of people to meet?
Counselor Denham?
Did you want to answer that?
If you, or Chief? Whoever wants to respond to that specific question, then I'll take Counselor Denham's comments.
So to your question, is it a hard line? So I've been doing this for 32 years. For me, as a public safety official, this is my strong recommendation to this legislative body. Yes, that's my hard line. If you choose to do any alternative, that then shifts some responsibility. I'm giving you my recommendation. We, the three of us are giving this legislative body our strong recommendation for these occupancies. What you choose to do with that, that's on you.
I saw Counselor Denham, Counselor Peak. I saw you also responding to the same question.
Yeah, yeah, no, so.
If not.
To your, to your question, right? This is the alternative that they could come up with, right? So this, the point that I'm trying to make is this does not have to be in here. It does not have to be codified, right? There could be another alternative. But now what we're saying is that this now is the baseline. And I think that's where I'm struggling with that. Because when we were talking, right? It was, it's a case-by-case situation, right? And so that's how I think myself and maybe others on the committee kind of understood it, that there might be other alternatives. So I don't, I don't think that this has to be codified because they could come up with that this is the alternative that we're recommending, given the size, blah, 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 right, of the space. And so that's just the concern. So I appreciate the the level of concern, the safety, the everything that's understood. I I think it's the it's the, we're saying that this is the baseline. And I don't think that that's necessarily how we understood it initially.
Thank you, Counselor Peak.
Yeah, I feel like I may be repeating myself, but there's just this one question here that I just can't help sort of just getting out of my head. So just to recap, so the, what we're proposing here in C4 is an alternative to the state requirement that our building and fire officials feel is an acceptable alternative. And I feel like their case for being an acceptable alternative is sensible. But what I'm not sure about is just whether, just it's it's just about who has the authority to make these rules? And it's about whether or not us writing any of this actually has, like, let's just say that there's some tragedy down the line and that that tragedy occurs in a place that has the monitored, hardwired, you know, detection system as as being proposed here? And that the three of you decide, we've actually changed our mind, you need to do the state code, and that's that's that. Does this ordinance carry any water at that point? Because it feels like we don't actually have, I don't, I'm not aware of us having the authority to actually set those parameters for you. So it sounds like this is guidance, but that guidance feels ephemeral, and I'm just nervous about that. Like, I I'm I'm nervous that, like, that this is, what we're proposing here is, does this make sense? Am I, am I sounding like a crazy person here? Does this make sense? Like, that, like, this, this is guidance on what, on an alternative that you currently would feel comfortable with. But if those circumstances changed and either you no longer felt comfortable with it or you moved on and your replacements no longer felt comfortable with it, then would this language in our ordinance actually provide any sort of binding guidance on whoever's in those jobs in the future to actually do anything? Or would they be able to say, well, that's an ordinance, but I'm actually following state law and state law says it's this or whatever I'm comfortable with, and I'm not comfortable with this thing?
So ultimately, it's it's the building commissioner's decision based on the recommendation, if they take that into consideration in the fire department. If there's a, let me jump to the fireside. If there's a city ordinance that states that sprinklers are not required and state law says that they're required, then they they need to, sprinklers need to be put in there. So.
Exactly, okay. So then I'm just, I I guess I'm wonder, I'm I'm just, I I'm, that's, I guess, something that I I'm I'm worried that if this isn't actually, like, if ultimately there are other factors floating in the world, like, maybe one thing that I I was, maybe these sorts of things would be a good fact sheet to go up on a website saying, hey, are you looking to do a short-term rental in East Hampton? Here are some codes you need to be aware of, and here are some, you know, solutions that we think you could talk about, and here's who you should call. That, to me, makes sense because it's non-binding. But when we put this in an ordinance, this is a law, and it feels like it's a law that is not actually a law because it can be overridden at any point if whoever is in your positions, whether it's you or a future person, feels differently about this being an acceptable alternative to state law. I'm not trying to get too meta here, but it just, there's something about that that troubles me.
That sounds like a question for legal counsel of ours.
I don't think we need it.
At that point, you know? Who, to to separate for us? Or do you think it's all clarified? Then it's clear.
I feel like I didn't get to fully answer the question before when it came up. And what I want to say, and I'll use an example. Locally, we have a place that added a third unit to a two-family. That would require sprinklers. The former commissioner issued the permit, didn't mention anything about sprinklers. The place is built, the guy didn't put the sprinklers in. I went to the state building inspector and said, hey, we have a situation. I was told by them that the, because the building official approved it, then that stands. So in this ordinance, any of the short-term rentals that are registered under this ordinance with that provision that I approve, another commissioner could not functionally come in and say, no, I disagree with that. And so that's all undone. But if you don't adopt this in this ordinance, then anything goes as far as like what's required. And the default, the default is sprinklers. Now, those are vastly more expensive, and I've already expressed my concern about sprinklers. I'm not a fan. Now, I had to get passed out with with the chief because fire is always pushing sprinklers for everything. And I don't necessarily agree, and especially in this case. So that's the importance of it being written into the ordinance. Otherwise, it would be then a case-by-case after an inspection, and it may come down to, yeah, you need to do this, this, and it will involve sprinklers. And especially for accessory dwelling units that are used for short-term rentals because those are new buildings, that would be the default. You'd need to sprinkler it. They could take it to the appeals board if they want. But, and so I I'm not gonna.
Can I just respond to that?
Counselor Riley's been waiting.
I know, I just, I just want to clarify really quickly. So it's just, I I completely understand what you're saying there when it comes to existing things. What I guess the situation I'm worried about is like, imagine that 10 years down the line, I get a one-year job somewhere else and I decide to put my house up on Airbnb while I'm gone. And at that point, this is what's on the books, but the feelings of the the people in your positions have changed. Like, does this even carry any water if you decide that you actually don't want to consider this?
Well, it depends. If you've registered it through the ordinance, per the ordinance, as a short-term rental, and it's approved, I inspect it, I approve it with the alarm system, you're you're good. If you don't, and you decide 10 years down the road you're going to short-term rent your house, it'll be subject to whatever is out there at that time. I mean, I I don't know. The ordinance can change. As was mentioned earlier, it's up for review every year, every two years or something. I mean, things do change, and in fact, the conditions of the ordinance can be amended. You alluded to ordinance, which is very outdated. I'm very painfully aware of a lot of those sections that I'm tasked with enforcing, and I don't know which way to go because they conflict within the ordinance itself. So it is what it is, but.
Counselor Denham?
Yeah, I just, I I think, I think language is is really important. And I I I don't think that it's anything goes, right? I think we're we're asking for what's reasonable, right? And and I think that this could be the reasonable response, given the size of the house, or something else much smaller or whatever. If it's a one-bedroom room and the door is right there, then what's the reasonable thing that someone in any of these positions are going to be doing, right? And I think that it's a, as you both said, I think it's a collaborative conversation about what's the most reasonable thing. But, you know, going back, like, this could be one alternative. And so if this is one alternative, then I don't necessarily think that this is something that has to be in this ordinance. I mean, that's where I'm at.
Thank you. Counselor Riley has been very patient while we've had lots of going back and forth. Counselor Riley?
Thank you, Mr. President. So the the first thing that I want to say is, is not a reflection of the dialogue that has been going on. I appreciate the dialogue and that people are asking questions and and sorting this out. And I I think that's healthy for democracy. You know, what I I will say, though, is having served on the Public Safety Committee for four years, I've gotten to know the chief very well, all of the members of the fire department. I was chair of appointments when we hired the building commissioner. I engaged in a very lengthy Q and A with him at the time about his philosophy in inspecting buildings. And just to say that there there are decades of collective experience just between these two individuals who have seen what happens when something is not well-regulated. And that that, the things that you see from a non-regulated or under-regulated instances in in this scenario usually involves people dying. It is members of the public, our family, who would be visiting, even the professionals that would be going into the building to rescue them as well. And and this is not to diminish the the Q and A, because I I think that's really important. But we also need to understand that if this is the recommendation of the building commissioner and the fire department, it's because they truly have embodied the circumstances of when something is not well-regulated. And that's a lot. That's a lot for an individual to take in, even if it is, something is, you know, as small as, you know, well, you know, we got everybody out, but all of the pets died. That's still, you know what I mean? You're still embodying the the stress and the trauma of the work. So what I, I don't see this recommendation for an alternative as being controversial. And that if this is what Chief Norris is recommending that we include, then I I think that we should do it. The other piece that I I I kind of want to point out here is that we are talking about right now the absence of a regulated industry in East Hampton and that we are, we need to bring ourselves up to code to regulate that industry, right? For for whatever reason, in the past, we have had people operating short-term rentals and Airbnbs in East Hampton with zero regulation. And that's dangerous. That that, to me, is scary that we haven't done that yet. So I I welcome that we have got to this point. Two other things that I wanted to mention. One is to to the point of discretion. We we can never account for the discretion of future employees. That's just, we don't know who those people are, right? I would like to think that the chief will stay with us until he's 80 years old. He's probably going to leave.
Eighty?
Before then.
Ninety, I saw. You're going to leave early.
But the point is that somebody, somebody new will always come into these positions. And the discretion piece is always going to be a wild card. But what we do have at our disposal as a council, like when we went through the appointment process, I was able to ask the building commissioner about his discretion, what his philosophy is. So, you know, this is not like we would just end up with brand-new people in these positions without us being able to have some sort of a say over whether or not you can, you can have this position, right? The city council gets to be a check on some of these conversations. So I think it is incumbent upon us and all of the future counselors that come after us in 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 many years to always be mindful of the discretion power that some of these positions have. And then the last piece is that, you know, we live in a federalist society, and there is a supremacy clause that says that every government over the top of us gets automatic say over certain things. There are very few instances where we get to say, this is what we are going to do, and we don't really care what the state of Massachusetts says. So if at any point the state law changes or the state gives more authorization to a building commissioner or the fire department to do X things, it doesn't actually matter what our ordinances say because by being a supreme government over the top of a local government, they can at any point tell us that our ordinances are null and void and we need to do X, right? This is always a part of American democracy. So with all of that, you know, I recognize that I I'm only here for one more meeting after this. So, you know, my comfortability in voting for this tonight, I think, is separate from what I'm hearing as a lot of uncertainty and questions of my fellow counselors who will be here in January. And I know in the past, we have come to public hearings and we've gotten into the weeds and we've started to ask questions. And then the more that the dialogue goes on, the more questions we have. And as a sort of general philosophy on this council, whenever those things have happened, we've always resorted to saying, hey, why don't we just bring it back to committee to readdress some of these things? So that way, we know exactly what it is that we're voting on and what it is that we believe in and and what the, you know, what the rules actually state. So I would be in favor of that because it seems like there are a lot of questions that may not be easily answered tonight. Yeah, and I guess that that's just how I feel. And and I I would hate to restart that process again. I know that members of the public are here and probably want to weigh in. And this has been an ongoing issue. So the the question that I have with all of this in context is, can we, can we talk about what happens tonight? If, let's say, we put it up for a vote and the vote fails, what then happens to, does that mean that nobody can have short-term rentals in East Hampton until the cooldown period, right? Or would we have to wait six months before we could even reintroduce legislation? Is that correct?
Typically, that would be the case, that we would wait six months to have new legislation to discuss the topic that matters in the area of 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 matter. We would resort to what had existed in the past, whatever that is.
It's a moratorium.
And there's a, and there's a moratorium currently in effect, which had been put in place with the hope that we would come to some sort of resolution and have something to propose. I know we have several members of the public who are probably anxious to say something, have spent lots of time waiting to say something. And I think it may be unfair to continue to hold them off from saying something at this time. Although we may choose to put this on hold in terms of going back to committee. That that's a possibility that we have. We could vote on it. That's all up to us. Right. So that being said, Counselor Denham?
Yeah, I just, I just want to, you know, address something. I I think this is the biggest kind of sticking point, right? And I think that we've already discussed that, that this is an alternative that already is an option for the building inspector, for the fire department, et cetera. But I I think that, again, I I tried to talk a little bit about the residents, the hosts, they're the ones who are impacted by this. This is not cheap. This is expensive. And I think that this becomes an equity issue. Because the reality is, is that having spoken to some of the hosts, that if this gets passed as is, they're out. Like, I can't afford that. I make four, I made $4,000 last year as a short-term rental to help subsidize my mortgage. And now I have to put in a $5,000 system. Like, that's just, and and I have to pay monthly in order to be able to have that monitored. That's just not feasible. So now we've created a situation where there are people in the community who were looking for an alternative because years ago it was explained to them, however it was, that they could do that. And now what we're saying is, mm, sorry, even though that there's other alternatives out there, you don't have access to that because this is the baseline of what we're going to be working with. And so they are impacted by that. The other thing that I think is really important to understand is that in looking at the registered, the number of, looking at the who's registered for short-term rentals right now, 70% of them are women. So it is a very specific population within the community that's going to be impacted by that. Also, many of those individuals are seniors within the community, and they made this particular choice of doing this to help supplement their income, to help supplement their housing cost. And as we already know and are fully aware, the cost of living, housing in East Hampton is expensive and it's rising. And what we are doing by codifying this is we are taking away from them an option that allowed them to be able to stay in their home. I think that's unacceptable. And what we're asking, and what we're asking of the fire department, and what we're asking of the 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 commissioner, is we don't need this. You are, you have this as an option. Like, what are the other options to be able to help people stay in their homes? This is just one more income revenue opportunity for them to be. This is just one more income revenue opportunity for them to be able to do that. And so what's going to happen was when the people who started this and who wanted to be able to do this to help supplement that, what we are now opening up the door for is the people who can afford it. It's the people who have apartment buildings, that who are gonna have the opportunity to take one of those apartments offline, and they can put in a sprinkler system, because they're charging so much money right now for residents. All of that is money that they could then use to be able to turn an apartment into a short-term rental. And so all we're doing is reproducing wealth for the people who already have wealth in our community. I think that is unacceptable. And what, what this is, is unnecessary, because it already exists within their ability to be able to choose that. And so I think we're setting up our community for a mess in terms of people who are no longer gonna be able to afford to do that.
Councilor Jadzick?
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I, there, there's been a lot of really good points tonight. And I am on the same level as Councilor Riley is. I'm feeling very inclined to perhaps put this back to subcommittee. And to your point, I want to acknowledge the people who are here and online who want to speak. We've had a lot of time to hear from our departments, which has been great, and we need to hear from our residents, too. So I guess my question to you, Mr. President, is, should we maybe put our discussion on hold to hear from our, our residents? Or if we were to make a motion to move this back to subcommittee, could we then still hear from the residents? Or what would maybe the appropriate order of operations be?
The appropriate order would be to hear from the public and then send back to committee.
So that would be my opinion.
For anyone who would care to speak.
Because I, I do want to acknowledge the time, and that there's been a lot of effort also put in. And I think we have a lot more to discuss ourselves, but I don't, I, I want to hear from the residents as well, so.
So I would be inclined to say that I'd be in favor of going back to committee, but I think we, I see some nods. But I am very cognizant of the long wait and the trying to make this work for the entire community. I'm sure we have folks in the audience who have been waiting, folks online. Please, come to the podium. You have up to three minutes to speak. Anyone from the public?
Ryan Griffin, Director of Public Health. I just wanted to reiterate what Councilor Riley said about the importance of having an ordinance or regulation in place, because currently, the short-term rentals that we have in East Hampton aren't regularly inspected or permitted. And just a prime example is about a month ago, I got a complaint about a rental, and it was an unpermitted bathroom slash kitchen combo that they were renting out. So I just want to reiterate the importance of having some type of regulation ordinance on file, as opposed to the Wild West, as I believe it is now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nate Markey, 37 Holyoke Street. I'll be City Councilor-elect, so I'll be sitting on this board in January. I, I appreciate Counselor Denham's passion, and I agree with her wholeheartedly with the points she made. I also understand Counselor Riley and others' concerns, particularly with department heads, professionals, and their, some of their concerns about the short-term rentals. I do, I don't know much about this. I wasn't planning on speaking about anything this evening. I was just gonna sit in my chair. I feel that it would, I wouldn't, I wouldn't like to see a vote be made tonight and then have to wait for six months to come back up for a vote or the legislation be changed. I think that the most appropriate course of action would be for council to send it back to subcommittee, try to get more input or do whatever council does, which I guess I'll find out soon, and have it be brought back up in January or February and stuff, and try to get that, kind of, the screws tightened down so it could pass committee. But that's my, that's my opinion.
My name's John Lassito. I'm a short-term renter in East Hampton. I also happen to be an operations manager of a commercial, a commercial building. So I have a rapport with the State Fire Department and the State Building Department, and I've had ongoing conversations with them over the last few years. So what I'm about to say may help you or confuse you more. So the whole short-term rental thing at the state level is still a super gray area, and they really are trying to reel it in themselves. And it's very confusing in regards to laws versus codes. And what I can say is a few things. There was a training at the state level in regards to short-term rentals, and East Hampton, for whatever reason, did not make it to the training. There was a training for this, because, again, it's very convoluted, and it's very hard to understand. Also, what I know, and anybody can check this, fact-check this themselves, there are no fire sprinklers in any short-term rentals in the state, even six and over. They are trying to figure it out, but there has not been a push to put fire sprinklers in them yet. There are no, there are, the fire codes do not include the word "short-term rentals", so that's why when we go to look it up, we can't find it. It's not in there yet. They're working on printing that into the fire codes, but it doesn't exist. I'm not sure if this fire, the fire alarms that we're trying to put in are above and beyond the state code. I didn't get a chance to look that up, because this all happened very fast. But what I do know is that if we decide to trump the Massachusetts code and write something into our codes that exceed, it must go through the Attorney General's office for a hearing to be approved, to do, to put in codes that are above and beyond the Mass codes. Let's see, just a couple more things I want to say. I thank you for mentioning that we, I think that you had mentioned that the hosts that currently have been hosting already, we're, they're gonna think of a way to auto-renew. I think that's very important. I think that people who have already proved that they're worthy hosts, they should be renewed and not be kicked aside by someone who comes in who's a new renter, okay? And the noise ordinance is simply a discrimination. East Hampton doesn't have a noise ordinance. We can't impose them on short-term rentals only. I personally monitor my property, and I go outside and say, I have neighbors, you can't be loud out here. And then my neighbors stay in their pool till 10:30 screaming Marco Polo. So.
Thank you.
Hello? Online comment?
Once we finish with the in-person comments, we go to online comments. So please, you finish your thoughts, sir?
Yep. And then just the vague nature of the ordinance, giving this inspector's discretion is, you know, it defeats the reason why we have codes. We have codes because that's what the, that's what the Building Inspector and the Fire Inspectors go by, is the codes. When you just say you have discretion, then everybody gets to make it up as they go along.
Thank you.
So there's some wordage in there that needs to be checked. I would like to just say that the videos and the minutes from the meetings for the last six months have not been up from the Ordinance Committee meetings. So a lot of the hosts could not reference them if they couldn't make it to the meetings and see the notes.
I'm gonna allow this to continue because of what you're talking about is a process issue, and that's very important that we have a good process, so please, I will allow this to continue. Go ahead.
Yeah, I was just saying that we couldn't all stay on the same page about, and watch the videos or read the minutes to the meetings and stay up to date with what was going on with the progress of the Ordinance Committee meetings. And then I just wanted to say one more thing, is that both, both the State Fire Department and Building Department said that we really should work with them on this to make sure that we are within, you know.
All right, I will, I will call it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Time is up. Sorry.
Hello. My name is Mona Scott. I live at 159 Park Street in Precinct Four. My daughter Lindsay and I own a house together, a farmhouse. We purchased it together as a way for me to stay close after my husband, her dad, passed away in East Hampton in 2019. My daughter Lindsay Rothschild and her partner Erin LaRose created a guest suite in my home that they manage as a short-term rental. They make it viable, this makes it viable for me to live there. It's a lot of hard work. They are here every week cleaning, restocking, and they spend time communicating with the, with the guests. It warms my heart, they do this so that I can be here. I interact with a majority of the guests. They are mainly here on weekends. They're usually visiting family in East Hampton, going to a wedding or attending a funeral. Sometimes they're visiting kids in local schools, in colleges, or attending the art fair or a local 5K. I know that Lindsay and Erin are in communication with the guests. From what I understand, they, from the guests, that Lindsay and Erin are super hosts, I don't know exactly what that means. And from what they tell me, many of the guests comment that they like meeting me, so I guess that's a win-win. I know they were really, Lindsay and Erin were really shocked when they received the punitive-sounding cease-and-desist letter last year, as they have been very conscientious to create a safe and welcoming space and to comply with local and state laws. My daughter can't be here today, as she's at a conference, but I wanted to come and share that I know that she's been working alongside other East Hampton hosts and the City Council to create a local ordinance. She shared her frustration that after cooperatively working together with the City Council Ordinance Committee over many months, that it seems that the burdensome regulations were put into the draft ordinance of the last committee meeting. I appreciate some of which Councilmember Connie Denham has spoken. Of course, of course, we care about safety. I'm in the same home with the guests. Lindsay and Erin are much more present than a traditional landlord should would be, so it's hard to understand why burdensome regulations that exceed long-term rental standards would be put on short-term rental hosts. Thank you for listening, and I urge you not to overregulate short-term rentals and embrace the benefit that short-term rentals bring to East Hampton residents. And the legal memo that I did have an opportunity to see also pointed up a lot of things to be concerned about, and so I also would support sending it back to committee to review the things that have been brought up here, as well as the things that were brought up in that legal memo, which I believe you all had a copy of. Thank you.
Anyone else here in the audience? Thank you.
My name is Mindy Cotherman. I am a short-term rental host. I work as a Realtor, and I'm a long-term rental host. I appreciate the committee. We've been slogging through this for nine months, and it's been a lot of hard work, and I appreciate everyone hanging in. From a long-term rental host perspective, I want to say that every single time, 98% anyway, that I've gone into my long-term rentals, there are smoke alarms that are on the counters, on the refrigerator, not, not present at all, and it's very frustrating. I've never had that in any of my short-term rentals, ever. In fact, every guest, if there's a problem, calls or texts me. They know that I'm available 24 hours a day, and they can reach out, and I'll be there within minutes to take care of it. So I appreciate that. At the end of the last meeting, the Ordinance Committee meeting, also want to say I care about everyone's safety. It's super important to me. At the end of the last meeting, the Building Commissioner and the Captain Dan were talking about the amount of money short-term rental hosts make. They were throwing around $50,000 to $100,000 a year, and I want to say I think that's anecdotal. Thank you.
Anyone else? From the public?
Hi.
And we're still looking at the folks in, in present here.
I'll be really short.
You may continue.
My name is Chase Hunter. I live at 21 Pine Brook Drive, and I've had nothing to do with any of this, and this is the first council meeting I've been to, but I have been a renter at a short-term rental unit, and I think they're really important. And I've had friends come up from other states who have visited, because we didn't have a place for them to stay, and they've stayed there. And they spend a lot of money in East Hampton, which is, you know, another benefit of them, because we don't have a hotel or someplace for them to stay. So more power to you all for figuring some of this out, but, but please don't take them away. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dan Constantine, Melinda Lane. March 2025, Clifton, New York. Mom and her child perished in a fire. No smoke alarms. Wisconsin, 2024, six members. This gentleman's family died. No smoke alarms. The short-term rental revenues are rapidly approaching hotel revenues, which were $93 billion last year, according to E-Turbo News. Short-term rental revenue numbers are predicted to double by 2030. Hotels and motels are commercial properties that fall under more stringent laws and regulations, but both have the same type of clientele, short-term renters. Why should there be no oversight for the short-term rentals? We learned this in the 20th century with a lot of tragedies that happened in hotels and motels. All these safeties issues could be addressed if we took the necessary steps of regarding vacation rentals as commercial enterprises, as they are. You're one- and two-family homes, they're commercial enterprises now. Most states and localities still categorize these properties as residential use. With a hotel or motel, guests are considered part of the general public and pay a lodging tax that is used to fund, among other things, regular government inspections of the accommodation to check for safety issues. Short-term renters of vacation homes also pay a local lodging tax, but they aren't getting any of the property, getting a property that has been inspected properly. We've been willing to regulate hotels and motels in the name of safety, but while at the same time ignoring short-term rentals as their popularity has exploded. Compounding the problem with capacity is egress, which is one of the most ignored safety issues in the short-term rental industry. Thousands of rentals have been created in spaces that would never be permitted in commercial settings. Sleeping areas are improvised in attics and lofts that lack legal egress windows. Many are set up as places for children to sleep. In a fire, heat, smoke rises to these locations rapidly, making escape even more difficult. Local governments regard these properties as residential and have little oversight to address egress. Just looking at some of the short-term rentals in town, and I looked at weeks, what it costs to be a week. One of them was $1,677 for a three-bedroom, Virginia. She's a super host, 334 reviews. Lindsay, super host, 39 reviews. It's $1,085 to stay there. $2,026 for a three-bedroom, that's got 100 views. Flora, she's a super host. So safety is extremely important. We need to treat these as commercial properties. Thank you.
Thank you. Still dealing with the public, if I may. So anyone else here as a member of the public?
Laurel Gardner, Plain Street. I usually prepare things really carefully, but I just wanted to start by saying that to call these burdensome regulations as opposed to the long-term rental regulations, again, just comes down to safety. If somebody is staying in an unfamiliar place for one or two nights in party mode, it's a lot different from somebody that you get to know over the days, the months, the years that they're staying with you. And speaking of equity issues, isn't it more... And speaking of equity issues, isn't it more important to have, I mean, the state made accessory dwelling units by right in places that didn't used to be able to have them because we're trying to get more housing stock, not more tourist rentals? I'm not saying we shouldn't have them at all, but I'm glad there's a cap, and I'm glad there are safety regulations, and I'm really hoping that you city councillors will think carefully about this. If somebody's only making $4,000 from their short-term rental, then, okay, maybe they are going to have to long-term rent the place instead, because then they won't have to use the cumbersome, burdensome safety systems. I guess I'll, the only other thing I wanted to say is that I, I was glad that the mayor put a moratorium, let, let people who are already running these things have more time to get in their income that they've been making, but just remember too, that some of these are whole-house, some of these are not owner-occupied, some of these are people who live out-of-state and are running one here, and again, what's happening to our housing and to our, we keep talking about affordable housing here, folks, but this is taking away from affordable housing. So again, I'm glad there's a cap at least. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you. I have somebody online who's wanted to speak.
I am, Roxanne.
Okay. I see a hand from the account of Roxanne Mariana Prowl. If that's you, please unmute and... Hello, is that Ms. Roxanne Mariana Prowl?
Yeah.
So please, please unmute and take your...
And you, can you hear me?
Up to three minutes, yes, thank you.
You can hear me? Okay, great. Okay, hi. My name is Roxanne Mariana Prowl. I'm known by Rocky. I am a senior, and I rely on operating a short-term rental in my two-family home to supplement a modest income. Like many older homeowners, I'm not doing this as a large-scale business. This is a small home, owner-occupied, and I host just a few guests a year. I heard what people are saying about what, what's being posted that one might make as a short-term rental owner, but I want to really, really identify the fact that what it costs to run one versus what is demonstrated online is, it's a, it's a stretch. If you want to see my, my financials, I'm happy to share them, I'm super transparent, and what Captain Constantine made seem like was like this, like, super lucrative business is, it's not actually that, but I'm happy to be transparent. I have nothing to hide. I will share all of my expenses and what I actually earn from a, from a short-term rental. I want to nip that in the bud quickly. Secondly, I want to say that I support reasonable regulation of short-term rentals that balances safety and community standards, and, and I actually attended quite a few of the meetings with the ordinance committee, and I really appreciated the collaborative environment that that was, that was there. And I want to applaud Counselor Smith and Counselor Denham, and while Counselor, well, now Mayor Derby was on the, that committee, that it was a really wonderful community collaboration, it felt really great, and I know that JP, you came in afterwards. It felt really great. It seems like at the very last minute, things sort of got pushed in a more universal requirements for, for these, these sprinkler systems and hardwired systems, which, which are not, if you look at the memorandum, it doesn't actually say that the building commissioner is the person to...
Thirty seconds.
Restrict those. That is actually, that comes from the fire chief. The fire chief is the one person who can identify whether or not it has to happen. There, there were a lot of things that sort of got clumped in at the very last minute, that felt really pushed, and I really prefer the more collaborative experience that I had in those smaller meetings. I really would advocate that the council takes this regulation back to committee and try to identify what's essential...
Please finish your thought.
Yeah, and what's true, and then, and don't extrapolate all these other extraneous, I don't know, details that aren't, aren't relevant. In any case, thank you so much, I really appreciate your time.
Thank you. If anyone else would like to speak online, please raise your hand.
I would like to speak.
Please do so.
Hi, I'm Matt Waugh, can you hear me?
Go ahead, Matt.
Yes, I'm an East Hampton resident homeowner since 2008, and happy to address the council. Thank you for giving me a moment to speak, I'll keep it brief. As a homeowner, I'm very alarmed with this overreach from the city council, and especially the building inspector, I didn't realize he was an attorney. I would really caution the city council against taking advice, especially legal advice, from the building inspector. I think this is extreme overreach, recognizing Counselor Denham's statement. East Hampton would be the most extreme regulated community in the state for short-term rentals. If this measure was to pass, I would encourage every single homeowner in East Hampton, whether or not you ever thought of doing a short-term rental, to immediately go and apply for one of these 50 sacred spots, it's incredibly limited, even if you're not thinking about it, you better get, get it locked down now. I wasn't thinking about it, but I certainly would, because I would want to reserve my right to do this. I think it's an incredible overreach. I think the city is exposing themselves to an incredible amount of legal risk. I would, I would certainly sue if I was a short-term renter of, of my unit, I would immediately contact my attorney, because I think this is an extreme overreach of the building inspector, who I don't believe is an attorney. I would like to also acknowledge Mindy Cotherman, who happens to be my neighbor, I don't know her very well, although she's lived next door to me for some number of years. I had no idea that she was short-term renting until she contacted me in, with alarm about the level of crackdown that was occurring in this community. Again, all I knew that she purchased a, a property that was in total disrepair and spent a huge amount of her own money to rehab it. The property seemed to be incredibly improved, and I never heard any kind of problem whatsoever. She told me she was short-term renting, I was extremely surprised. I had no idea that this type of overreach was occurring. I told her I would come here because it was incredibly shocking that a person who invested in their own property, directed, would be facing this kind of discrimination by the city council. I would also like to encourage the city council to not conflate the issue of affordable housing with this issue of short-term rentals. People who own their property should be allowed to do whatever they can to survive and make a little bit of money on their property, it's a tiny amount. If anyone in the council has ever used an Airbnb around the country, you'll know that these properties in East Hampton rent for peanuts, around $65 to $100 a night, it's nothing, they probably rent for a month, minimum of two or three nights a month.
Please finish your thought.
Even if they rented for every night of the month, it doesn't matter, they should be allowed to make any amount of money they want to on their own property. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Nancy Pearson.
Yes, hi. Let's see if I can get me up here.
We can hear you.
Okay, good. My name's Nancy Pearson, and I own 14 Taft Avenue, and I believe this short-term rental ordinance will apply to me, I was one that received the cease and desist letter. I've owned it since 2001, I'm not taking it out of the housing stock, and it won't be appropriate for me to long-term rental it, because I, the reason I have the house is to come and visit my two children and two grandchildren that live in East Hampton. I believe that having short-term rentals in East Hampton are a benefit to the East Hampton, because people who don't have room in their homes can have extended family come visit, which is what happened over Thanksgiving at my, my rental. I do have strong opinion that you do not codify the state law, don't even attempt to do it, leave the state law and the building, the building codes to stand on their own. You can direct them with a fact sheet, I love that opinion, but don't try to codify it, because if anything changes, you guys are stuck, and every two years isn't enough, and then we don't know what we're doing as hosts to, to, to be in compliance, and if we have to reapply for registration every two years, every year, we don't know what codes are going to be. So please don't codify, leave it to the, the state law to change it if they want to. I also have some issues with other provisions, and I, I believe the, the ordinance as proposed is too vague and needs to be further fleshed out, and I would strongly support it being sent back to committee. A couple of things that are still too vague is the caps and how they're determining which of the 50 will be there, also about, let's see, also about, let's see, what else, sorry, what else was there? There, there was a couple of areas that I didn't understand, and like the 250 days for me, who is a non-owner-occupied, you've exempted out other things, I would like to have that restriction exempted out for those of us who weren't, were in existence in March of 31, like 2025. Anyway, there's, there's other things, I strongly encourage you all to send it back to committee, and I will definitely take part of those committee meetings. I just didn't know when they were occurring in the past, I couldn't figure out how to access them, and I couldn't figure out what actually happened in those meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else before we discuss whether I would proceed here? Anyone else from the public in online community? In person? Not seeing anyone else, I would... We promised you that we could speak as a person, so although we've heard from you as a, a building commissioner, I will, I will keep, keep that promise, so please.
As a resident, I'm alarmed at the idea that a whole house could just take place in any community, in any residential setting, without, the way the draft is set up now, it's simply a registration, if you comply with everything that's in the draft, you're, you're good. Other communities have special permit requirements for short-term rentals, that gives the public a chance to weigh in on, on a case-by-case basis, so, and actually suggest conditions which can be agreed to. The basis for my concern is also founded in two legal decisions in Massachusetts on the basis of the single-family homes used not primarily as a single-family home should not exist in a zone where commercial operations are not allowed. So in all of our residential districts, you have no right to establish a commercial operation right now. They have to be in commercial districts. So once a home, just any building, but once, I'm just talking about homes, are used for more than half of a year, the principal use becomes that short-term rental, which is a commercial operation. The, it falls into a different category entirely by building code and zoning ordinance. So the provision that currently exists in the draft for allowing it up to 250 days for non-owner-occupied is something that is problematic.
Look at his face.
So I would like to see that changed, and that should be addressed. Owner-occupied is different, because then the use becomes an accessory use to the owner-occupied dwelling, whereas non-owner-occupied over half a year becomes a different use category completely, it becomes an R1, which is on the same par with hotels and motels, and should not be allowed in a residential district.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Back to the council, if the public has had their say this evening, if we return back, the public is certainly invited to return again, should that be the choice of the council to continue this hearing, should it be the choice of the council to continue and go ahead and return this to ordinance, then the public would be entitled and invited and asked to participate at the ordinance level, as well as continuation of a hearing here. I take it that that may be the will of this, this, this council, and I would entertain such a motion, should there be any further discussion on that subject. Now would be the appropriate time. Counselor Riley?
Yeah, just very quickly, I, I just wanted to say, I know that this process has been going on for a really long time, and there are instances when the government moves a lot slower than other instances, and this is one of those, so I just wanted to express my gratitude to everybody who has been engaged in continuing to have these dialogues. I know that this is sometimes painful to get into the weeds of these kinds of policy debates, but it's really important, so I just wanted to thank everybody for being engaged. And unless there's any other questions or remarks, I would move that we send this agenda item back to the ordinance committee.
If we move to do that, then would you also recommend that we continue the public hearing?
I, I think that we're all set with the public here. I, that, that's...
Because I don't think we should close a public hearing if the matter is to come back before this, this council. I think that public should, should remain, that outright should remain.
We'd have to continue it indefinitely, right? Because we don't know when it's going to come back.
Well, we could continue it indefinitely, we could continue it to a definite time, and then decide at that time, we could not pick it up sooner than the time that we would define. Continuing indefinitely, I'm concerned about the legal aspects of doing so during the public hearing process. I think it's important that the public know, if, if we're going to discuss this again, it will be discussed in, in the ordinance, and it would be discussed at this city council meeting and date in the future. That way, the public is assured, okay, go into ordinance, and it's going to go to public hearing. So I think it's important to continue the hearing, so that everyone stays informed and knows what the steps are.
Okay, so then, Mr. President, I would, I would like to withdraw my motion, because I don't know what that timeframe looks like, and I would defer to the members of the ordinance committee to set that timeframe. Thank you.
Point of order?
Please, point of order, that takes.
Counselor Newton needs to remove her second before...
Oh, I would like to remove my second.
Thank you.
Mr. President, please.
Remove. Do we have any further discussion about continuance and times? We may think about it for a moment.
I'm just going to be very honest, I would rather we vote and decide whether or not there's pieces in here that we want to keep, because as our health director pointed out, we are operating without an ordinance right now, and I think that the, the city is, has a liability at stake, and there is nothing in here that is so egregious, other than one point that we spent over an hour talking about, whether or not that, that we want that in there. Yes, there's other pieces in here, but I, I, I just...
Thank you.
Look, look it up, right?
Counselor P.
But I'm not finished yet, yet, so I think that it is, is prudent upon this council to decide if there's pieces in here that we want or don't want, and then put something on the books so that, that the city is safe. This has been reviewed by the attorney, big chunks of it, so there was comment about a brief that was after we had received comment from the city solicitor. So I think that there are pieces in here that I think we're, we're spinning our wheels around some issues in here, that I think, that if we just decide whether or not we want them or don't want them, that we could, we could resolve this, many aspects of this.
Thank you. Counselor P.
Yeah, I, I completely understand the desire to be, to, to have something in place, I think that makes a lot of sense, but I personally, for me... But I personally, for me to feel comfortable voting on this, there's a couple of things that I just want to get a better sense of. First of, I'd asked questions about this in the past. I just kind of want to understand, probably from the solicitor, a little bit about how this, as Counselor Riley put it, the supremacy clause aspects of this goes. Like if there's elements of state code that are in here, and then the state code change, or there's things here that we don't actually, the potentially a different building commissioners' opinion could overrule what's in here, that makes me really nervous. So I want to get a better sense from the solicitor about how that works. And beyond that, we haven't really talked about it until just now. But there is that, there was a brief from a national industry group on the subject. Now, like, look, we get a lot of, you know, those sorts of groups send their things along, and sometimes they're nonsense. But just given how serious some of the statements were, it would make me feel a lot more comfortable if the solicitor just said, hey, this is crap, or actually, this is something that I hadn't thought of that we should really think about. So that's just, I'm just personally not comfortable moving forward until I get some of that, just so that I understand kind of what the ramifications of us voting to accept this is.
Counselor Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I agree. If we were to move to do a vote at this point right now, I would probably vote no. And I'm concerned about that because of the cooling-off period that you mentioned earlier. I think, I won't speak for anyone else on council. I'll just speak for myself personally. I think that there are enough other issues that I personally have not yet had a chance to raise because of how we've addressed the back and forth with the Q and A and the public and our discussion that I think warrant a lot more discussion. And we haven't really even unpacked the issue around why the ordinance committee voted 3-0 to put forward something that they themselves have said tonight that they did not feel comfortable with. So I think just from that perspective alone, I'm wholeheartedly in, I want to put this back to subcommittee. And I think if there's a concern around timing, let's put some timing regulations in place. We can say a month, two months. We've heard directly from the public tonight, and we've heard over email and other conversations that the people who are going to be most impacted by this from the short-term host perspective are fine with us delaying this. They don't want us to vote tonight. And they've said that tonight loud and clear. So whether it's we come back to this in February, January, March, whatever it is, I think that, to me, feels much more prudent at this point. But again, I will vote no if this goes for full vote at this point.
Counselor Smith?
As someone who's on the ordinance committee, I had an extraordinary amount of emails that hit yesterday asking very detailed questions about this. And I feel that I would not be doing my due diligence to try to come up with an answer within those 12 hours between then and now. And because of that, I feel fine taking this back to committee for those reasons. I would like to understand a little bit more regarding the timeframe issues. I don't feel that that was, can you just come ahead with that? We were saying we have to not put it off of public, I just want to.
I think the hope would be that the public would know that, yes, we intend to continue, and that the continuance would be such that the next step would be to go back to the ordinance committee with the expectation that that matter would be returned to a public hearing at the council level on a specific date. Whatever that date would be subsequent to, whatever we think at this time would be sufficient for the ordinance committee. I, it's very unusual to take the staff, I presume you're here as staff?
Yes, I am. I just wanted to let you know, the zoning ordinance piece of it, it has to be continued to a date and time certain. Otherwise, it will have to be read advertised as a public hearing again in the paper, which is very expensive. So we try not to do that. So I did just want to put that out there. You have to do that.
I'm just going to throw out a date. I don't know if it's a good date or a bad date, but it's a conversation starter. What if we said, so this is our first meet, this is, wait, yeah. This is our first meeting in December. What if we continued it to like our first meeting in February? Give us approximately 60 days to work something out. And if at that point, there's a feeling that there's not been a reasonable, like a satisfactory conclusion, it can always be continued again. But, I mean, if you want to do 30 days instead, or whatever, like, that's fine. But I just think, like, let's just pick a meeting. And then if that isn't enough time, then we can always do this again. So what do people think about that? Just that.
February 4th.
The first meeting in February. You had mentioned last time you want to bring back up the school. I don't know if that is still set in stone. Just wanted to remind you of that.
Yeah.
Thank you. Another issue, yeah. So the question that we just brought up was the date of the first meeting?
Would have been February 4th is the first meeting in February.
February 4th. So that's what Counselor Pete has suggested. Counselor Denham has suggested we deal with it tonight. Does she have another comment?
I mean, if people want to push this off, that's fine. I think that, just given the fact that there are going to be new people here in January, we might want to push it to the second meeting in February just to give people enough time to be able to, like, get up to speed. Also, we're dealing with recommendations from the Federal Affairs Housing Partnership that are our next meeting. So I'm getting, it's probably not going to get till January to be able to come back to this.
Still, you said January, but you were suggesting February.
No, I'm saying we're probably not.
In committee.
In committee.
In committee. It's not going to come to a meeting until January. So then, at the end of, that can always be extended.
Yes, so that's what I'm saying. Just as a start.
I presume it would require an announcement in a public meeting in order to continue it at that time should we decide that the second, the second meeting in February is too soon. That could always be continued. All it would take is the announcement. Okay. Anyone else? I will say a few short comments. And they're really specific to, I think we want to do the best for what is for the entire community, both on the level of the safety of anyone who stays in the units, whether they be long-term or short-term. We want to comply with the laws of the Commonwealth and the federal government, if, should there be any regarding this matter. So the question to deal with the attorney, I think, is important. So I think that that's something we want to do. We want to take into consideration the issue. I've heard the issue with the cap. And I know that there's some thought about whether there was any, there was another proposal that had been on the table, and that was for 50-plus, five or 10% more units in order to be able to give the health commissioner time to be able to evaluate and take on the paperwork for the units and allow for flexibility to have growth in the number of units, assuming that there might be a requirement for more, a request for more. I think legally, we could be in a very tough situation to set a fixed cap on this. So there are lots of issues that need to be addressed at the ordinance level and to come back to here. So I appreciate the public coming and helping us with this process. I would entertain a motion for the second, for the continuance through to the second meeting in February and for the matter to be, in the meantime, referred back to ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to continue the public hearing until the second meeting in February, which is the date of, again, February 18th, Wednesday, February 18th at 6:15 p.m. in these chambers, Wednesday, February 18th at 6:15 p.m. for the continuance of the matter. And in the meantime, it would go referred back to ordinance committee for discussion. Any further discussion among the counselors on that subject? Seeing none, we'll go to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
The House had it. This matter will be continued to the aforementioned dates and go back to committee. Thank you all. Do we need a break?
Yeah.
Do we have?
I would make a motion to close the public hearing.
We have another, do we have to deal with the other one?
Short-term rental request review, general ordinance amendment, short-term rentals. I think, I thought they were all together.
This is a zoning ordinance.
The zoning ordinance as separate. Yeah. The zoning ordinance, I thought we were continuing. Was that motion to refer both? Or was the motion only to refer the subject of the ordinance? Because our intent, I thought, was to continue all of this.
I didn't realize because they didn't have little things. I thought this was one big item.
Let me say this. Is there anyone here who came to speak on the issue of the zoning ordinance with regard to the short-term rental zone? Because if that's the case, you should have the time to speak to that subject. Now is the time.
What started the ball rolling on adoption of an ordinance for short-term rentals was the fact that the use was not on the use table. Short-term rentals are a specific use in our zoning ordinance, like many zoning ordinances. Throughout the Commonwealth, we'll say that anything that is not found, any use not found on the table is considered prohibited. That's why I sent a letter to 14 Tapped Avenue. I received a complaint. I followed up as I had to do, sent a letter to cease and desist because the use was not allowed per the zoning ordinance. So this is just a method. This is a way to get the use on the table to make it a legitimate use. So it's important to do. And also the definition part of it, so.
So the definition and the use part of it, do you see it in conjunction with the subject?
Well, for it to be allowed, an allowed use, it has to be on the use table to be an allowed use. So it's important that it ends up on the use table. Otherwise, it creates a conflict in the ordinance. It says if the use is not on the use table, then it's prohibited.
Don't deal with one without the other.
Correct.
So let us, if there's no other person wanting to speak to the subject, we could also entertain motion to send this to ordinance committee and to continue the hearing on that matter.
So moved.
But I wanted to be sure there was no one else from the public since we had advertised a public hearing on the subject that had been specifically stated. Is there any member of the public online or in person who would also care to speak to that subject? That is the zoning ordinance amendment, rental zoning ordinance amendments of the short-term rental zoning. No one? Thank you. We've covered that base. We can entertain a motion.
Point of order, point of order. I'm sorry.
Counselor Denham?
So this was voted on by council. This went to the planning board. So we're kind of on the clock of getting this passed. So I guess I'm trying to understand, do they have to be in unison? Or can we adopt the, because we're going to have to do a short-term rental general ordinance. So I'm just trying to understand.
Will we attempt to have the planner here and?
Is this going to have to go back to the planning board for approval again?
Or are we on the clock?
You have time. It's from the date of the close of the hearing is the time.
From the date of the close of the hearing? And we would be continuing the hearing?
You're continuing the hearing, yeah. I mean, there is, I was trying to find it earlier. There is a timeline, but this was just advertised as a public hearing not that long ago. So you have time.
Okay.
Definitely to do that. I was going to add something else, but anyways.
Okay, thank you.
I wouldn't, I was going to add, I wouldn't suggest only approving one without the other.
Yeah, that was helpful. I was concerned about the timeline.
Good, so it doesn't, it sounds like we don't have a time issue. We can't entertain the motion?
Yeah, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to continue the public hearing for the rental zoning, short-term rental zoning ordinance. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That was continued until February 18th at 6:15 p.m. in these chambers. Will that matter also be referred to ordinance? Was that part of the motion?
Yes.
So that was part of the motion. Was that understood by everybody?
Okay.
I see a few affirmations. Good, that motion passes. Counselor Pete, you were talking.
I move that the public hearing be closed and that we take a five-minute recess.
Second.
Motion and a second to have a five-minute recess and to close the public hearings. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. See you in five minutes. The time is now 8:48. Please, microphones back on, cell phones on and off. All right, we're going back to the meeting. And I believe we were at public hearings. And gosh, I look around the room and I don't see anybody. But I had a public hearing come in. So if I may, I'm going to go to the podium.
Yeah, okay. What's going on? What happened?
Public speak time.
Public speak time, public speak. So I'm now a member of the public. I'm James Korsinski, and I live at 47 Hanbrook Drive. And I just wanted the public to know that this coming, not this Sunday, but December 14, Sunday, December 14 at 7:00 p.m., there'll be a gathering at the Christmas Box Angel at, across from the Nashuanic Pond, right next to the municipal building. I'm pointing over here because it's right over there. And it's for, the gathering is for folks who have lost a child. And I'm sorry if I get very emotional about that, but that's why I came over here. We don't expect that to happen in our lives. It isn't something that you anticipate. When you have a child and they put the child, you're lucky enough to put them in your arms, you look down and it's just the most amazing experience in the world. So I wanted the public to know that for those who have lost a child, whether they be stillborn or however old they may be, it doesn't matter. It doesn't matter. Not everyone will understand you. Not everyone will understand your grieving periods or that the grieving never stops. You may want to take advantage and join with some other folks who are in similar situations. And that's the opportunity and the beauty of the Christmas Box Angel. So at 7:00 p.m. on December 14th, you have that opportunity to join and say a few words at that time if you care to. Say nothing, but just to share your own heart and your own experience. I wanted to be mindful of that. And I thought the community should take it full advantage. And they don't have to be from East Hampton to be part of it. Thank you.
Sorry, what's the location? It's like this little tiny park.
The location is, I think it's technically called John Bader Park, right over behind the parking lot,
Yep.
between the rubber thread property and across from Nashuanic Pond and adjacent, literally adjacent to our public parking lot here at the municipal building on Williston Avenue. Anyone else from a member of the public who cares to, uh, have public speak? If you're anyone in the online group, raise your hand now. Seeing none. Public speak time is hereby closed for the evening. Moving on to items for immediate attention, communications from elected officials and boards and commissions. Councilor Denham?
Uh, just want to remind everyone in the room that we have the Municipal Leadership Academy, so we are still collecting applications. So, um, we're, they're trickling in and so hope to get some more so that we can, um, you know, offer up that opportunity for folks to learn about the city, but also meet the amazing department heads like Chief Norris in the back. Right, it's a great opportunity to, um, learn about the work of, of our city department. So I hope that, um, folks will, um, sign up for that.
Anyone else? Councilor Jantik?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I'd like to, uh, let people know and invite them to, this Friday is, uh, the East Hampton City Arts 20th Anniversary Celebration. It's a fundraiser and an acknowledgement of 20 years of us having ECA here, uh, in East Hampton. Uh, I think we can all agree that arts and culture are really important and vital parts of our community. And so this is a way to come together, celebrate and, um, bring some money for ECA. So that'll be this Friday at Marigold Theater from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. There's me, music, live painting, uh, food, asylum auction, awards, lots of other fun stuff. And then I also wanted to mention that this Sunday is Hubulation. I believe that's at 5:00 PM. Um, and so just wanted to let the public know as well that that is happening this Sunday.
That sounds like great events and lots of fun. Um, anything else?
I just, where, where is Hubulation happening this year? Is it at Millside Park?
I believe it's still at Millside Park, yes.
Councilor Denham?
Uh, yeah, sorry, I just want to, back to Municipal Leadership Academy. Um, the application is online, so if you just go to the city website and you just search for Municipal Leadership Academy, it will, uh, take you there.
Thank you. No other comments? Uh, we have communications from the president and vice president, mayor communications. Mayor's not here, but he, the mayor was on.
I'm, I'm actually here.
Was online? Oh, I thought, I thought you had left.
I'm here.
I see you online.
I just want to.
Mayor Communications, you're, you're up.
Thank you. Uh, sorry to be joining you remotely. I just wanted to, um, say I don't really have a report, but Hubulation's at 5:30 at Millside Park. And, and I look forward to seeing everybody at the, uh, ECA celebration at the Marigold on Friday.
Excellent. Anything else?
That's it?
Nope, that's it for mayor communications. Finance committee. Councilor Pete?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, we met last week to discuss the items that we discussed in public hearing. Uh, and it doesn't look like we have any new business related to finance, so I think we're gonna not meet next week. So congratulations, uh, people who don't have to deal with me for entire two weeks. So, yeah, uh, that thus concludes.
Anybody from public safety?
Yes.
Councilor Riley?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I just have a, um, uh, a point of clarification if I could get some from, I guess whoever would be our closest parliamentarian. So the public safety committee has not met in maybe six months. For, you know, various political reasons, doesn't matter. And that chair is absent. There is some business that still needs to be resolved before my time on the committee is over, including approving minutes. Am I, as the clerk of public safety, allowed to step in as interim chair in order to conduct the city's business with our, our new member?
Any, any two members of the, of the committee may call a meeting of the committee.
Okay. So then, um, I will confer with, um, Councilor Newton on setting up that meeting. That will, that will come, um, within the next couple of weeks. Uh, but I will, um, check in with the, um, council clerk to ensure that that is properly advertised.
Good.
All right, um, and thus concludes.
Yep. An extension on West Street?
Yes, thank you. Um, a 90-day extension of the traffic and pedestrian safety on West Street in a form of motion, please.
Second? Is there a second?
Second.
The motion is second for 90-day extension. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Appointments. Councilor Smith?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to defer to Councilor Riley tonight because, um, I had a car emergency on Monday.
Oops.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you Chair Smith. So the appointment committee last met, was it this Monday?
Yes.
Yeah, God, it feels like it's so much longer ago. Um, on December 1st, we had before us one, um, new mayoral appointment and then a series of mayoral reappointments. So first is the, uh, mayoral appointment for Leslie Shar to the Commission on Disability with a term expiration date of December 31st, 2026. Um, we did not have the opportunity to meet with Ms. Shar in that meeting. However, I have known Ms. Shar for many years now and can attest to her ability to serve in that capacity. And then while I could not confirm with her, um, any of the requirements for identifying with a disability or being a caretaker, um, I do want to say that we have more than enough folks on the Commission on Disability that we don't need to worry about having that, um, demographic quorum. So, um, I feel comfortable, uh, moving her forward for appointment. I, I'd just like to pause and see, and actually, that we voted 2-0 to move her forward. So I wanted to pause to see if anybody had any questions or reservations about doing so.
Seeing none?
Okay. Um, so in the form of a motion, I would like to, um, ask the full council to appoint Leslie Shar to the Commission on Disability with a term expiration date of December 31st, 2026.
Second. Motion and second to appoint Leslie Shar. All, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
All right, thank you, Mr. President. And then, um, we have a series of mayoral reappointments. Um, so just to confirm, each of these appointments all have term expiration dates of December 31st, 2028, so I'm not gonna read the date for each one. This is for everybody. So I'm just gonna go through the names and the boards and committees.
That makes sense.
Perfect, thank you. So in the form of a motion, I would request the city council reappoint the following. Robert Newton to the Aquifer Protection Committee, Jamie Paquette to the Bees Committee, Genevieve Goldleaf to the Bees Committee, Gail Cannon to the Charity Funds Committee, Deb Peavy to the Council on Aging, Catherine Carey to the Council on Aging, Peter Follett to East Hampton City Arts, Connie Dawson to the Energy Advisory Committee, who is also being moved into a full member appointment from an associate member, Jamie Paquette to the Energy Advisory Committee, Beverly Wodika to the Historical Commission, Evan Garver to the Manhand Rail Trail Committee, Ronald Albertson to the Manhand Rail Trail Committee, Beth Tiffany to the Nashuanic Pond Committee, Wendy Taylor Jordan to the Planning Board as an associate member, Anthony Corella as the Plumbing and Gas Inspector, Leslie Button to the Registrar of Voters, James Johnson to the Veterans Council, and Richard Beachy to the Veterans Council.
Second.
So this was to move this to, to me?
Uh, no, this is, this is to affirm their reappointments. Is there a question about whether they should or should not be appointed?
It was, it was, yeah, I was just wondering if you might consider holding off to the next meeting. Is there?
I mean, so then what will, we, we would have to send it back to committee, is that what you're suggesting?
I was going to ask that.
Okay. Okay, I, I'm sure that you have a valid reason, so, um, so then I will withdraw the motion.
Point of order? I'm sorry, I'm confused. What's happening?
Um, it's, it would seem as though, um, President Krasinski has some reservations about the reappointments.
Moving, moving the full list of reappointments at this time.
Okay, I'm just trying to understand what was.
Yeah, we were, we were talking about, I've requested that the list be considered for our next meeting.
Okay.
And the motion was withdrawn.
Can I, sorry, can I ask another question, point of order? What, what, is that a timing thing? What, what's, I don't understand.
I wasn't anticipating that that would be the case this evening and I would, I appreciate your indulgence.
So then my, my question for you then, Mr. President, is do you need us to hold a new hearing on these individuals? As in, you, you feel that there is something that needs to be discussed before we move forward?
There may very well be.
Okay.
And I'm not looking to talk about it at this point.
Okay, um.
But if the group feels that you'd like to proceed?
Here's, here's, here's my, my challenge, um, that I, I think.
I'm expecting that you may receive communications.
Okay. All right, um, I'm, I'm happy to hear what other folks, I, I'm, I'm, I'm happy to do this. I would just, does anybody have any issues with us doing that?
With the delay?
I'm now very curious, but I wouldn't say I have an issue.
I appreciate that.
If I may, Mr. President, I'm just wondering, um, because it's such a large list and I, I'm sure you don't want to unnecessarily call out specific names that may be up for concern, but that to me feels like it might delay reappointments of other people unnecessarily.
You're absolutely right. If they, if, their request was to delay to our next meeting.
So just to confirm, so there, there've been questions in the past. While the term expiration dates, um, for these individuals does technically expire December 31st, it does give us a little extra time to, to hear. Um, there is also a provision within the city that even if the term expires, the person is not automatically removed until their replacement has been confirmed. So whatever this, uh, reservation is that you have, even if it goes into January, this does not preclude any of these individuals from continuing.
From serving.
That's correct.
That's correct. Councilor Denham?
Again, just clarifying, so these are mayoral appointments, so.
Mayoral appointment requests, there isn't a deadline that expires with the request.
But I just want to be, is, is the concern coming from the mayor?
The concern is not coming from the mayor.
Okay, so.
The deadline is January 3rd, though.
That's correct.
Right, so we would have it resolved at the next, by the next meeting.
Definitely the next meeting.
Yes.
Okay.
And, and just to also confirm that with that January 3rd, if we do not move at the full council on this, then the, the mayor's essentially pushes it through automatically.
Right, that is correct.
So either way.
Either way, the, the appointment goes through.
That's correct.
Unless, unless the council takes action.
Right.
And it may choose not to.
Right, that's correct.
That's right.
Okay.
This gives us time to make informed decisions.
Um, understood. So I would just say with, with respect to the process, if you could send all of the information that you have to each of the three members of the appointments committee, um, in a, in a separate email, so that way all three of us are familiar with what's going on, so that way we're ready to.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Perfect, okay.
Thank you.
So then I'm going to, um, I had already started to make a motion, so I'm gonna withdraw any previous language that I said.
Thank you.
There wasn't a second, yes, we don't need to worry about that.
We don't have to withdraw this.
Um, so instead I, um, will make a motion to send these mayoral reappointments back to the, um, appointments committee.
Thank you.
Second. Right? Yeah, you made a motion.
Motion and second to resend back to the committee.
That's correct.
Good. Any, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
All right, thank you, Mr. President. Um, and then the last, uh, order of business that I have before you is that if you recall, um, some months ago in my absence, new business was introduced for the Code of Conduct for Appointed Members of Boards and Committees and Commissions. That was incorrectly sent to the Appointments Committee. So at our last meeting, we voted 2-0 to resend that agenda item back to the full council with a request to send it to the Rules and Government Relations Committee for consideration.
Second.
See if I understand that. To send back from the Appointments Committee to the Rules and Government Relations Committee, the Code of Conduct Appointed for Appointed Members of Boards, Committees and Commissions. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
All right, and, um, we will confer, uh, as a committee to identify when our, our next meeting will be, but I, let me just check here. So, um, it actually worked, we'll keep it the same, right? Yeah, so, um, then the Appointment Committee meeting will next happen on December 16th. Conference Room 2 at 6:00 PM.
Conference Room 2 at 6:00 PM.
Yes. And, and please come if you would like to speak to.
Sure.
Yeah, thank you. All right, and that officially concludes.
Thank you. Ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to talk about the general ordinance amendment, just kidding. I'm kidding. Uh, our next meeting is going to be December 18th.
Sorry, we're a little slow on the update there.
It's all right.
All right.
I think most people, um, December 18th at 6:00 PM will be our next meeting. I think I asked for a room, but now I'm forgetting.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
I can't remember what room, but you did ask and I reserved it.
And then I have, uh, several items, request for residents' requirements, the review of affordable and fair housing partnerships, zoning ordinance, um, amend Exhibit A to add position of public safety dispatch director and city council action request review, sandwich board signs, uh, in form of a motion, I'd like to extend all of those by 90 days.
Second.
Motion is second to extend by 90 days, the aforementioned items. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And I think the ordinance committee has given enough to the city council this evening.
Good. Very good judgment.
I'm sure.
Are you sure? Are you sure? Property.
Uh, so properties.
Mr. Pete?
Thank you, Mr. President. Properties not met. I'd sort of like to see if we could maybe meet, uh, next week if there's a time that works, so maybe we can chat, um, after the meeting, uh, about that. I should have had it scheduled ahead of time. But just to be safe, I'll go ahead and request a 90-day extension on both of our outstanding items.
Second.
Motion and a second to extend for 90 days, the two items for the property committee. Is there, there was a second? Yes, motion and second.
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The extension granted. Anything else?
No, that concludes, Mr. President.
Good, thank you. Rules and Government Relations. There is no chair, we have a clerk.
We do have a chair.
We do have a chair, the chair's not here this evening.
I am.
You have a new chair. We're at a meeting. Okay.
Yes, I'll be happy to, to report out. Um, thank you, Mr. President. So, um, yeah, so rules and government met on Monday. And we, at that meeting, we elected a new chair and a new clerk. The chair is myself, the clerk is Councilor Newton going forward. And then we will bring on board anyone who joins in the new year, once we have our, our new organization. But we met to discuss the city council 2026 meeting calendar. And so I'm not entirely sure how best to, uh, I guess, read this into the record. I have a calendar which, uh, the clerk has prepared and which I've corresponded with the clerk on with one change that the clerk is aware of. Do I need to read all of the dates specifically at this point? Or can I just say that the calendar has been approved and so?
The calendar was handed to all the counselors. The assumption is that they are aware of the dates, the change that.
So I can speak to the change.
You can speak to the change.
So we approved the calendar as is with the one sole change being in July. So the original proposed date was the 8th of July and we voted 3-0 to move that date to the 15th of July because the concern was that since the 4th of July falls on a Saturday next year, either the week of the 1st of July or the week of the 6th of July. either the week of the 1st of July or the week of the 6th of July could theoretically be considered vacation weeks. And so we thought that it would be safest to move to the 15th and then that still gives us enough leeway between the July meeting and the August meeting.
So the suggestion is to move the calendar date to the 15th for the July meeting, which is traditionally one meeting in a given month. And that sounds like a good plan in terms of all the other dates and any conflicts with any religious organization, any group, anyone who might feel that they might not want to have the council meet.
We are not aware of any other issues as far as, we're just holidays for any of the other dates and we did double-check as much as we could, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So that was the main item. I'd like to request a 90-day extension for the resolution in support of the Water Operator Retirement Reclassification in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion second to extend the Water Operator Retirement Classification, 90 days. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
We do not have our next meeting set yet, but we will be setting that.
Were you...
Do we want to vote on the calendar?
Do we want to propose a motion on the calendar? Yeah, I was going to say.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, so I would say then I would like to put a motion forward to vote on the calendar with the amended date of July 15th, as mentioned earlier.
Second. We have a motion in second to accept the calendar with the amendment to July 15th as the first meeting in July or the only meeting in July. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. And that thus concludes.
Excellent, thank you. Old business, new business. Time to mayoral appointments.
Yes. I was just conferring with Counselor Smith on if I should do this. So in the form of a motion, I would like to send the, can I just, do you want me to read out each name or just say the aforementioned appointees? I'm happy to do either way.
Probably as late as it is, I'd love to say aforementioned. We should mention the names.
Okay, then I will go quickly.
Since this is the public...
So in the form of a motion, I would like to send the following mayoral appointments to the Appointment Committee. Eileen Roisman, Affordable and Fair Housing Partnership with a term expiration date of December 31st, 2026. Thomas Drutt to the Manhan Rail Trail Committee, December 31st, 2026. The rest are all 2028. Michael Sherwick to the Barnes-Aquifer Committee. Sean Abbott to the Bees Committee. Daniel Buttrick to the Conservation Commission. Jay Ryan to the Conservation Commission, as well as Jay Ryan to the CPA Committee. Ken Ivekia to the CPA Committee and Josh Rosenblatt to the ZBA.
Second.
Motion in the second, so that was for the nine appointments or for... That was for the nine appointments.
Yes, just the appointments. There's more after that, but that's for this one motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
All right, and then in the form of a motion, I would like to send the following mayoral reappointments to the Appointment Committee. Each have a term expiration date of December 31st, 2028. I will do this, and Mark Tanner, the city solicitor, 2026. Recall for all of us that have done this before and for the new counselors that the city solicitor is always a one-year appointment as opposed to a three-year appointment for most, or five for others. So Janet Tedrow to the Affordable and Fair Housing Partnership. Laura Fisher to the Agricultural Commission. Renee Hill to the Bees Committee. Scott Redman to the Board of Assessors. Thomas Malsbury to the Board of Public Works. Mark Tanner, city solicitor, 2026. Louise Jacobs to the Council on Aging. John Bruner to the CPA. Stephen Colacelli to the East Hampton City Arts. Wendy Hamerle to the Manhan Rail Trail Committee. And then Amy Marsters to the Nashuanic Pond Committee.
Second. Motion second on the 12 mayoral reappointments. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oops, I didn't see the hand. My apologies, thank you.
I will need to abstain from one of the reappointments, which is Stephen Colacelli.
You have one abstention. In the absence of that, you would vote yes to all the others. But to be sent to...
To the Appointments Committee.
The Appointments Committee.
Yep.
So, good, sorry, it was confusing.
Yeah, that's okay.
Can the rest of us vote?
Yes, at this time, we'd be asked to vote. Thank you for the abstention. All those in favor?
Aye.
Good.
All right, and then finally...
Sorry, I was expecting you all to vote.
And then finally, I'm not sure why this is put in as a separate motion. I'm just going to read it. It is a mayoral reappointment for Sheera Simon to the Affordable and Fair Housing Partnership with a term expiration date of December 31st, 2028.
Second.
Motion in second on the single mayoral appointment, reappointment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And that is it for appointments.
Finance perhaps for the other.
Is that what we wanted something?
Yes, that city clerk's proposal for vital statistics fee increase.
All right, well, maybe we do.
The fee increases, I would think. Finance may be an appropriate place for that discussion.
I would move to send the city clerk's office's proposal for a vital fee, vital statistics fee increase to finance for review.
Unless there's somewhere else that folks would much rather have it. We have a motion in second to send to finance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. If there's no point of order.
Do we have a finance meeting next week now?
Well, I guess we're going to have to.
Okay, just to be clear that...
Only if you want to deal with it right away. Is this something that...
No, I said possibly February, take effective February.
So there isn't a requirement to...
Okay, well, we'll talk about it.
There isn't an urgency to necessarily...
On Wednesday, or we'll talk about it later.
Let's just talk about it after the meeting. Whether to meet, unless you want to schedule something.
No, because I was kind of thinking, well, let's talk about it after the meeting.
Excellent. A motion, took the motion to adjourn then?
Second.
Motion in second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
No? So here he knows, no knows, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you. We have papers to sign this evening?